Exactly, exactly. Okay. Everybody ready? Well, good evening and welcome to the Federway City Council meeting for October 18th, 2016. Would you all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's great to see a good crowd here. So, we were doing our budget presentations prior to this. We have some unfinished business and to address that, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, do you have a motion?
I do. I move to amend the agenda to add a new item to Section 7, Item 7B, that is, to discuss the budget amendment and revenue options.
Sure.
I moved in second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? All right. It passes. We'll talk about the budget. All right. Now, moving on, presentations. We've got, gosh, the Violence Prevention Coalition Steering Committee update. We've got the Chair Doug Baxter and Vice Chair Lawrence Garrett. Welcome, Doug. And is Lawrence here yet?
Looks like you're stuck with me. I apologize for that. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The Violence Prevention Coalition has been hard at work the last couple of months. We are preparing some community feedback. So, we're preparing an online survey that will be translated into Spanish, Ukrainian, and Korean. We hope to have that finalized tomorrow that we can send out and spend the month of November gaining community feedback about ideas, concerns about violence in the federal way. And we are planning one community session. That'll be next Wednesday here in City Council chambers at 6:00 PM. So, that'll be a chance for the community to come together, talk to the Coalition Steering Committee, and give in-person feedback. And also, we'll have an update about the incidents in the federal way that spurred the creation of our committee. We also plan to get significant youth voice for our recommendations to City Council. The school district is planning a survey that will go out to every student, K through 12th, third through 12th grade, and we're adding questions about community perceptions around violence. So, we hope to get a lot of really rich feedback that we can then turn into recommendations to the City Council. The one concern we have is we were supposed to have updates or recommendations by the November 1st City Council meeting, which could be pretty rough just because we're just now starting up our community feedback. We hope, the Violence Prevention Steering Committee hopes to have an extension till the 1st of April. We hope to have recommendations before then, but we would rather under-promise and over-deliver. So, that is our request to you, is that you allow us to have an extension so we can get the best feedback possible and also get the best practices so that we can come back to you with the best recommendations that'll actually have an impact on violence.
All right. Thank you very much, Doug. Appreciate it. Great work. Okay. A report on Town Hall meeting that we had regarding the IRG property last Thursday. For the folks that were here and that were also there, thank you so much. It was great. We had several council members in attendance. We really had the opportunity to start and to really engage in a conversation. Obviously, emotions have been high on this. It was really an opportunity. We had staff there as well. I'd like to thank the staff that was there late. But it was a great opportunity last Thursday at Lakeland Elementary to really have dialogue and have a discussion. One of the key things that came out was we were talking about the 324th Road and the impacts that's having on the property and what that means in regard to the originally proposed big warehouse at that location, and the IRG is obviously working through that. We're going to, one of the things that we passed out, we passed out two of those things, one of which was the comment letter that was sent out to IRG and really talking about, I think it was an 11- or a 14-page paper, talking about our comments, many of which reflected the community comments. And I thought that was very productive to walk through, talk about, and there are many things that need to be considered in this proposal. And so, I think one of the main things is that we have been saying and that staff has been saying, and is that there is a process to go through this, that process being followed, and we'll keep you in the loop all the way as we work our way through not only the Orca Bay Preferred Freezer, but any other proposals that we hear about. So, again, I just want to say thank you. It was really a great opportunity to have a conversation and reduce the volume. And my mentor and probably one of my best friends is Pete Von Reichbauer, and he says that, and he always likes to say, "Listening is the beginning of understanding." I listened a lot. I felt like you guys listened, and it was just a very, it was a good opportunity. So, again, thank you. And I, you know, hopefully, that's just the beginning. We're going to be talking as we move forward about what our collective vision is moving forward. And there were some really great questions about people asking, you know, "What do you want to see on this property?" Or, "What do we, what do we as a community want to see?" And so, we're listening. I really think also, just for the folks here about Northlake, it really is one of the greatest movements in cityhood that I recall about people really being engaged on citizenship level and engaging their council and engaging your local government. So, it's been great to see that kind of evolve. We had over 120 people there. If you didn't count city staff and folks that were there, because it's their job to, we had over 120 or more folks that were there. So, it was a very productive conversation. All right. And our door is always open, as are our emails, and it's been great to hear from you. Okay. A report on community events. We had Oktoberfest this past Friday. It was great. It was the Third Annual Kiwanis Oktoberfest. They did a great job putting it on. They had over 100 people in attendance, and I'd like to thank Councilmember and fellow Kiwanian, Councilmember Honda, and then we had Councilmember Martin Moore, Deputy Mayor Gene Burbidge. The event raised over $15,000 in donations that go into scholarships to fund the inclusion program at the community center. And the inclusion program is just one of the great programs in our city. Kevin Hutchinson runs it. We also, our own Dave Larson, our municipal court judge, just gives countless hours to that. And that's really one of the, one of the really neat things in this community. And let's see here. $100 scholarships awarded to people with disabilities for their life skill and enrichment programs, and well over 50 participants have been awarded scholarships in the past year. And with the increase in donations this year, we hope to raise the scholarship amount to $200 per year. So, again, it was a great event. And we had Advancing Leadership Evening with the Stars the next night. So, it was two nights in a row at the community center. It was just a really nice, in fact, Lawrence Garrett as the executive director of Advancing Leadership was there. Many community leaders, many people here on the dais. And one of the fun things about that is they actually have leaders, you know, like with the South County Fire or the police chief. I saw the police chief waiting on tables and myself and council members. And it's always fun to just really engage the community, and it was a great evening for Advancing Leadership. For folks that don't know, Advancing Leadership really originated out of the Chamber of Commerce, and it was originally, and has continued to be, a program in which leaders for our community are trained and then sort of set forth out in the community. For those interested in leadership training and getting plugged into the community, I would really highly recommend contacting Advancing Leadership and pursuing those opportunities. There have been several people on this council and in previous councils that have been involved. All right. And then, we have the Federway Symphony, and they had their gala that same night. And then, we've got upcoming community events, the Federway Super Supper this, on October 28th. And where's that at?
It is at Steel Lake Presbyterian Church.
That's right. Steel Lake Presbyterian Church on Friday, the 28th. It'd be great to have you there. And it's the Community Caregiving Network that is putting that on.
It's their only fundraiser.
Yeah, exactly. So, we hope, it's great. It really helps out, you know, folks in the community who hope you can make it. So, that's what I've got for my presentations. Now, for the most important part of the evening, we've got citizen comment. And if you haven't already filled one out, please do so. And if you don't have time to fill one out, come on up, Bob. And please. And then, if you don't have time to fill one out, you change your mind, you want to get up here, then we'll just have you fill one out after you're done speaking. Okay. So, let's go ahead and do what we've done in the past. I'll call out a couple of names, and you'll know you're on deck. Oh, thanks. First, we've got Suzanne Vargo, and then Nancy Ole, or Uli. Sure, yes, please.
Gosh, I feel like the sacrificial lamb. It's actually Uli, but Ole is good if it's French. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I have more of a question. Is that permitted?
Of course.
So, could you please, I may be the only person in the room that doesn't understand this, but could you explain to me how zoning works? Because I was very shocked to hear that that area is zoned for light industrial, and when somebody read a definition of that, it doesn't seem like the company that bought that, that's their intention. So, I'm worried that somehow, it's going to be rezoned without our knowledge. So, is it done at a city level, state level, county level, or what?
Okay.
Please, if you could explain.
Are you all done?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So, in answer to that question, so normally, every community decides during the course of the time, and it's a yearly review, how you're going to zone the property. And in a normal circumstance, you've got, you know, business park, or you've got residential, office park, those kinds of things. And so, those are, you know, certain established uses that a council, governing body decides, you know, fairly early on. But there are reviews that occur on a fairly regular, on a yearly basis, and then there-
At the city level, sir?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And then, there are reviews that occur, and then there are proposed amendments to those. What's unique about the former Warehouser property, the IRG property, is that in 1994, there was, in order to get Warehouser inside the city limits, the city incorporated and really started operating in 1990. So, four years into its existence, it came into a contract referred to as the Concomitant Agreement with the Warehouser Corporation on how those 430 acres would be treated in a zoning. So, it was zoning by agreement. And that Concomitant Agreement has been in place from 1994, and long before anybody on this council was here, until the present day, until today. So, it's been zoned exactly the same during that time. And the Concomitant Agreement has stayed the same, but the laws that are, you know, are backdrop to it or in support of it, there have been modifications to it, though, so we've had to take a look at that. But the Concomitant Agreement is, it's zoning by agreement, and that's how we got. But one of the things is, I ask you while you're done, because it's not, it's probably not appropriate for us to engage in back forth, back forth. So, did you have any other comments?
May I piggyback on that question?
Sure, you bet.
Is there a termination date on that agreement?
There is not.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. Thank you, Nancy. Now, Suzanne Vargo.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. I'm going to come at you with a lot of facts. I'll try to read it as fast as I can. I'd like to speak to all of you about another really serious safety and environmental issue. That is the petroleum pipeline that runs along the east portion, 670 feet of the Warehouser property. It is owned by the Olympic Pipeline Company, and it was installed in 1966. The pipeline is dug down 250 feet into the ground. This pipeline does carry petroleum, and it will be referred to as hazardous material throughout my speaking. I hope to shed light on this serious safety and environmental issue and why building anything near this pipeline should not happen. The DOT has put together an agency together which will better educate the public and local authorities about pipeline safety. Their goal is to minimize the likelihood of large numbers of casualties in the event of a catastrophic rupture. They are called PIPA, Pipelines and Informed Planning Alliance. Also is the PHMSA, Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration. PIPA compiled a 30-page report on education and guidelines to protect the public and environment from catastrophic events. Although they are recommended practices, communities should not hesitate to modify them to address their particular situations and their own tolerance for risk. In 2009, the Olympic Pipeline exploded in Bellingham, Washington's Watcom Falls Park. When the fire department arrived, the massive amounts of gasoline had turned the creek pink. The fumes were absolutely overwhelming. Black smoke from the explosion was visible from Vancouver to Anacortes, and the plume exceeded 30,000 feet in the air. Watcom Creek was turned into a river of fire, which exceeded 2,000 degrees. The water's treatment plant was nearly, was near the explosion site, and while the building itself survived, everything including, everything inside was completely obliterated. The rupture allowed 277,000 gallons of gas to escape into the creek bed. The city needed to manually add the treatment of chemicals to their water supply until the plant could be rebuilt. A leak can occur in one place on a pipeline, but an accident can happen anywhere within the path of where the chemicals are spilled. Construction of the proposed Orca facility is and will cover half of the 670 feet of this pipeline. Releases from the pipeline can be, can be a cause of a variety of things. Internal, external corrosion, excavation damage, mechanical failure, operator error, and natural force damage. Release of petroleum has an acute and long-term potential consequences as the released product can spread over land and water. The potential ecological damage and contamination of drinking water supply is a reminder that our vital resources need to be protected.
All right. Thank you, Suzanne.
I have a lot more. I had five minutes, I believe.
All right. You've listed one individual. Did you have five other people, four other people besides the individual you listed?
I had my sister Tracy on there.
Okay. All right. All right. All right. Go ahead.
I believe the tragedy brought some changes locally, but sadly, there are no federal or state regulations concerning what land or appropriate lands in the vicinity of a transmission pipeline. PIPA says local governments, officials need to acknowledge, discuss, and address the risks of these pipelines posed to our communities. When discussing the pipeline, there are many stakeholders involved in these decisions. There are landowners, pipeline owners, pipeline workers, federal and state authorities, local government, public landowners, and developers. PIPA states that local government and developers are not often knowledgeable about pipeline safety issues. When I look at the concerns, I am concerned about many things. Escavation and construction on the pie chart shows 71%. This is the leading cause of failure to a pipeline. Heavy loads and excessive travel also result in pipeline failures. The small Warehouser Way Road is transversed by many cars, and this will increase and be a huge problem. Digging around existing pipelines or disturbing of the wetlands could cause the pipeline to shift and produce leaks. Natural disasters such as earthquakes must also be in the forefront of our minds. Questions of what chemicals may be unearthed from the 1960s if maintenance was to occur. Suggestions are to develop around pipelines to be linear parks, recreational paths to encourage wildlife habitat, and that is just what the planners of Warehouser did. To minimize the amount of residents and businesses in our area to ensure the best safety and scenario for all. I urge you to do your due diligence and contact the appropriate authorities, I'm sorry, agencies, and abide by the recommendations by PIPA, PHMSA, Pipeline Safety Trust, the Municipal Research and Services Center, the Washington State Citizens Advisory Commission on Pipeline Safety, the Washington State Association of Counties, the Northwest Gas Association, and the Washington Utilities and Transportation Commissions that I have put before you. All of these entities need to be talked to. We all need to work together, and it is my belief that building a warehouse that will hold these highly toxic chemicals coupled with the possible, and judging from the age of this pipeline, a most definite rupture, it'll be double jeopardy for our citizens and our city. This cannot happen.
Dana Holloway, then Tom Mesmer, and then Julie Clary.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. My name is Dana Holloway. And one of the things that the public and you keep talking about is the industrial zoning of the former Warehouser campus. And I've gone through a lot of documents that have been on the FTP site and on the website for the city. And it's been much easier, since you guys are saying that it's industrial zoning, and that's what the IRG people believe, is could you please, as a city, provide where industrial zoning is identified on the Warehouser campus, what document sits in, and then, when was industrial zoning added to that document, and the location within the document, and then put that information up on the FTP site so that we can see it? Because when you were at the meeting last week, the word industrial is not in the 1994 agreement, because it was read to the public right then. So, we can't find out where industrial zoning got added. And I'd like you guys to be able to tell us where that was added. That might help a lot of people. Okay? And if you could put that on the FTP site, maybe under industrial zoning, we could all find it.
Okay. Are you done?
Yep.
Okay. Mark, do you have a, is this information that we can provide? We're going to, there were two pieces of information that we owe the people that attended the public meeting. Number one was the zoning on the west side of the lake that we could talk about now, but we're going to provide that to all the folks who left us their email addresses. And the second was Process 3 versus Process 4 and how that decision got made. Perhaps this, there's been a lot of discussion about the word industrial or industrial uses. So, perhaps, do you have anything to say at this stage in regard to?
I can speak to that. So, you're correct. There is nothing that says industrial use in the Concomitant Agreement. What the Concomitant Agreement does allow for is light processing and warehouse and distribution facilities. So, when the city gets an application in for a permit for a development, the city evaluates those, whatever the use is that's proposed, based upon the list of allowed uses that are within the zone. This is the same process the city goes through with any application in any zone in the city. So, if there's a single-family residential zone and there's a proposal for an office building in that zone, well, if it's not allowed in the zone, then the city does not allow that development to continue.
All right. Okay.
And with regard to your second point, the city is getting a response for everyone that's answering their questions that were raised at the Town Hall meeting.
Okay. For the folks that are here regarding Northlake and in regard to the, you knew this off the top of your head, you were obviously not at the meeting on the 13th, the zoning for the west side of the Northlake area.
Right. So, the zoning is still CP1 immediately to the west of Northlake, but because it's a regulated lake under the State Shoreline Management Act and under the city's shoreline management program, there's a 200-foot urban conservancy zone, which is an overlay on the zoning that provides additional restrictions and requirements for any, any kind of development that wishes to be pursued in that area.
All right. I want to make sure I got that answer to you folks, because you had asked that at the public meeting. We'll also put that in email form as well.
Then, I guess I have another question than based on what he said, since the word industrial is not in the agreement, is that there are zones or in the Pacific North, the Puget Sound, that are considered industrial zones, that have been identified in Puget Sound, and you're on that committee, board member, and we're not identified as a, as an industrial-zoned area in federal way. That's just a comment.
All right. Thank you, Dana. All right. First, Tom Mesmer, and then Julie Clary.
Thanks very much. First, I hate going before Julie. I always, I always like to follow Julie. And my wife says, "Don't be argumentative." So, just, so, point of clarity on the pipeline. It runs directly adjacent to Interstate 5, right next to Interstate 5. So, it puts it about 2,000 feet from the Preferred Freezer site, and it puts it farther and, and the large warehouse proposal, which the mayor said, you know, is too big now because of the new off-ramp. So, the new off-ramp would go directly over the pipeline, so I'm sure we engineered smartly around that. And I believe that DeVita Office Building was constructed closer to the pipeline than anything we show on our property. So, and 2,000 feet's a long way. So, again, you know, not to be argumentative, but for point of clarity, I've walked that pipeline. I've seen the guys doing maintenance. I don't know how deep it is. I didn't know it was there, you know, I think before we bought the property. I'm sure someone did. Quick update on the open house last week. We had 125 brokers, a lot of them from downtown Seattle. A lot of them didn't want to come from downtown Seattle, so we put $50 Uber credits on the table to get them down here to see the property, and I think everybody was amazed. They all really enjoyed seeing the inside of the building. Thanks to the council, who I've had a couple more discussions with the council. I appreciate you taking time with me. I appreciate the residents who've called me or come up to me at Poverty Bay and want to talk about this, or come by the house, or send me emails, and we've had some really good discussions. Yogi Berra said you can hear a lot just by listening. I came to your budget meeting tonight. One of the things I hear all the time is incremental. I had a discussion today with someone who said, "What are the incremental jobs?" So, not to talk about incremental jobs, but just to talk about incrementality. So, a couple of things, and this goes with your budget discussion, so it's timely. On the Preferred Freezer piece, when Preferred Freezer is built, it'll be a $50 million investment. That's incremental property that tax rolls. What that'll do is it'll add $800,000 annually to the property tax on that site. That's entirely incremental. Of that, $490,000 of that will go to schools. That's $490,000 going to schools that, that doesn't go there today. $105,000 incremental to fire. $65,000 incremental to city services, which addresses some of the police issue, and $26,000 incremental to libraries. That's all comes off the tax, the county's tax website. So, there's a lot of money there. Just the two projects that are currently in with Scott Sproul for review right now, and I know they're going to take a long time to come to fruition, but when you put just those two projects together, $1.6 million incremental property tax, which puts $1 million in federal way schools incremental to what's there today, $200,000 to fire, $131,000 to city services like police, and incremental $50,000 to libraries. So, I just, I hear the word incremental a lot, and I just wanted to sort of address that based on the budget discussion. Thanks for your time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now, Julie Clary, and then Tony Fint, and then Margaret Nelson.
This is what I was going to talk about, but this page 13, I think it is. Oh, page 13. Page 13 of the document you talked about on Thursday, that's the first time I've seen industrial on a man. That's the first time I've seen industrial on a map. So that's January 2015. There might be something sooner, but I just saw that this morning.
That's the conditions and considerations report done by our economic development director.
Okay, that's not what I'm talking about. So you can put it. Okay. So I'm just reading about the beautifulness of the landscape. And when it was first created, the boldness of Warehouser's planning and design, as well as Northwestern Sensibility owns much to George Warehouser, the great-grandson of the company's founder, who was the president and CEO in 1966. He originally was going to go with a designer in New York, but decided not to build the place out of wood, which is what they were going to use laminated beams over 70 feet deep. And they went with E. Charles Bassett in San Francisco instead. And then they had the lead landscape architect, which Jeans talked about, Peter Walker, born and raised in San Francisco. And at first, his personality kind of clashed with George Warehouser being a forester. And he was very simple, very direct. And Bern Schaaf was a New Yorker also himself too, but he had a fabulous collection of modern art. And the two of them started getting along pretty good. And blah, blah, blah. Walker had been the landscape architect for the Foothill College, a highly acclaimed campus near Palo Alto, California. And the first idea was to emulate the foothills' cluster of low wooden buildings. But it was unwieldy to disperse the company's 900 employees in a series of small compounds. So the existing site was actually the gentle valley between Interstate 5 and State Freeway. And they decided to turn the semi-darilic site, which was random, had random occupation and industrial use. The middle section of the valley was cleared to open the building to both highways so that both visitors and employees may arrive at either end of the building. The grid was allowed to allow an unobstructed view of the wildflower meadows on either side. Oh, I guess I'll have to finish up next week. Landscape of the nature and landscape of the office was opening to each other. I'm going to skip all this because the one part that I thought was really kind of interesting was all the trees that they planted. They planted over 2,500 trees. And the, when they were, oh, let's see. The valley was actually, supports a fairly narrow range of vegetation, but much of it, the soil is glacial till, glacial till with three or four inches of stone. And when it's disturbed, it tends to hold too much water and turns into quicksand. And laborers that were planting the trees quickly sank into the ground. So it's really wet over there. It's lots and lots of wetlands, and that's my whole point.
All right. Thank you, Julie. Thank you. Tony Fint, and then Margaret Nelson, and then Bob Woolley.
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to thank you for the town meeting. I thought it was very beneficial, very informative, very freeing of our conversation, which was greatly needed. So again, thank you for that. And it feels good to be acknowledged as a large concerned community about what's happening on the former Warehouser campus. The dangers of the ammonia that goes along with the preferred freezer project is completely unacceptable and unsafe for our families that live right there. It's just not safe. And I want to let you guys all know that we are here, we are all in, and we will be here until this is done. So thank you.
Thank you, Tony. All right. Margaret Nelson.
Thank you. I was happy to hear Mr. Mesmer say that he had 25 brokers down here. But if I was going to try to move that property, I would do the following. Mr. Mayor, I am concerned that locating the Orca Bay Building at its current site will be detrimental to finding a good tenant for the former Warehouser Headquarters Building. Please. The on-file site plan over next door for the Orca Building shows that its west side, adjacent to the road just across from the Warehouser Building, will have no forested buffer at all between those two buildings. Though the Orca Building's height will be about the same as the Warehouser Building, it will be situated at a higher elevation so that the Orca Building will tower over the Warehouser Building as it currently is built. The combination of being close to the road, having no buffer, and a higher elevation will have a negative visual impact on the site. The acting community development director could have some additional helpful information before he makes a final decision on the site. It would be possible to demonstrate the visual impact by utilizing a graphic artist, beginning with a street-level photograph from the east side of the Warehouser Building, looking eastward across the interior road there towards the Orca Site. On paper, that artist could eliminate and remove those trees that would be destroyed by the lack of the buffer. Then they could add a size-correct drawing of the west side of the Orca Building. The result would aid in knowing what you would see from the Warehouser Building, looking eastward, and show the visual impact that that Orca Building will bring. The visual impact of the proposed 700,000-square-foot warehouse site at the north end of the property could be investigated too. You might go to an elevation comparable to the packs, such as the transit center garage, and mentally eliminate the trees that would be removed and imagine the acres of warehouse, flat roof, that will be seen from the pack if that 700,000-square-foot warehouse is built. I hope that as mayor, you will direct the Orca Building illustration to be done and let the public see it too. And maybe Mr. Mesmer would find it a very handy object for his team too. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Scott, let's talk about that tomorrow, okay? Thank you very much. And by Scott, I mean Scott Sproul, the interim CD Director. Okay. Bob Woolley, you're up, sir. And then we've got Jeffrey Hastings.
I am Bob Woolley, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, city staff, citizens, and the Boy Scouts of Federal Way. I have in my hand communications from the Tax Assessor's Office. There's a refund check to all the residents that live on Lake Gene for 2015 because we were given relief because Lake Gene is no longer considered a recreational lake. I also have my tax statement for 2016 that was reduced by a like amount, as was the tax for 2016 for all the residents that live on Lake Gene. I also have in my hand our tax notice for 2017 that's giving us relief from taxation as a recreational lake for Lake Gene. And that is going to continue until a remedy is found for Lake Gene. It includes a loss of revenue to the city and all the other agencies that get tax monies from the 40 residents that live on Lake Gene. We received a letter from the club dated the 5th of October indicating that they were not going to take any action concerning Lake Gene during 2016. We also received correspondence from DOE that their permit office was not going to take any action concerning the experimental permit that the club had requested until sometime in 2017. The reason for making these comments is there's been little or no action, with the exception of the Tax Assessor's Office. They were here in April, they heard our case, they came to Lake Gene, they investigated, they reviewed, and they acted within a four-month period. Mr. Mayor, several meetings ago, the term of a citizens' action request came to the fore, and you explained they were trapped. On the 21st of September, I replied to Marwan Salom asking what action the city was going to take. I followed that up with a letter to you, Mr. Mayor and Deputy Mayor, asking what was the response to be expected from the city. I followed that up on the 10th of October asking that my correspondence be considered a citizens' action request. The citizens, the residents of Lake Gene are asking what action is the city going to take in 2016. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it. And oftentimes when people have a, just by point of information, oftentimes when people have a concern and a request for the city and the city administration, we initiate what's referred to as a citizen action request. And I would note that multiple levels of communication have occurred with Mr. Woolley. Marwan, do you have anything to add? I think at some point, we just got to the point where we had responded, got to respond, we just responded so many times. We actually initiated, just so everybody knows, we actually, on our own, even though it's a private lake and the bottom is owned by the Twin Lakes Golf and Country Club, I initiated our staff to test the lake for toxics once a week during the entire summer. And not one time during that period was it noted to be toxic. So, Marwan, do you have anything else?
No, Mayor, I don't have anything else to add other than we are in the process of putting a response back to Mr. Woolley based on his request. The response most likely is going to be similar to a previous response. We've been together and we've been sending to him. But that should be taking place in the next week or so.
All right. Thank you very much. And obviously now since the winter season has started or the fall has begun, testing has stopped. Is that correct?
We concluded testing at the end of September.
All right. Councilmember Maloney, do you, sorry, I know we're
Thank you.
Sort of miming back and forth here.
Yeah, just one question. When we did the testing, the toxicity, did we determine that based on what status of the lake recreational or what was the status of the lake considered?
At no time during our testing, the lake level of toxicity was above the recreational standard.
Okay.
So it's always been below the recreational standard.
Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to make sure.
Oh, sorry, I interrupted.
No, that's okay.
But my understanding is there are no other standards for toxicity other than recreational. Is that correct? All right. I would also note, what's that? Yeah, that's right. All right. Thank you very much, obviously. Thank you very much. Okay. Jeffrey, you're up.
Good evening. Thank you. First off, I do want to say thank you for the town hall meeting. I think that did go really well. And I think a lot of new ideas maybe came up, new questions. And I liked the atmosphere myself there. I think it went well. And that's actually why I'm here, because there was a woman brought up an idea there, and I don't think I'd heard it here. And I can't remember her name. And I was actually in a meeting with her before. She's very, very intelligent on this stuff. But she talked about the getting grants to set aside land for parks and stuff like that. And I thought, boy, wouldn't that be a win-win if, you know, unfortunately, Mr. Mesmer, I don't see him here. It looks like he must have left. But I thought, wouldn't that be a win-win if that land could actually be purchased through a grant? You know, maybe the Rhodey Garden and the North Shore for conservancy. IRG would get their funds. The city would gain, you know, some park and some clear ground. And, you know, I'd love to see Orca Bay go away, but at least if there could be something there. They're parsing the land up anyway, so it's not like they're trying to sell it all as one lump sum now. And so I didn't know, after that town hall meeting, did anybody take that note and think, we should look into that and see, can we get some matching money grants and see about purchasing the Rhodey Gardens and this stuff? As much of the stuff that can be preserved, at least, let's not have a scorched earth policy if we can save something. And, you know, of course, you know, a lot of us here would love to see it all just stay green completely, right? And IRG would love to see it all built and bring in a lot of money. And if there's a win-win in there, at least. So I don't know. Back to my statement or question is, was there anybody looking at that, what she brought up, the idea of maybe getting some grants?
Jerry, it's a great question. There had been quite a number of conversations. And they'd been concerning what Richard Pearson was initially talking about, what we had conversations with the Trust for Public Lands. And then there's another lead I want to talk about, but that portion on the west side of North Lake. And I think IRG has been very interested in pursuing that. And so that's something that, you know, I think there's even at least one, maybe two working groups in the North Lake group to discuss that. One of the things, and actually I had a conversation with Tom Mesmer a couple weeks ago, in which we were talking about if Trust for Public Lands didn't work, there's Forterra. And Forterra does a great amount of work in this region as well. Jean Devernoy has done a tremendous job. And there was actually a very interesting, many people may remember, remember the Bothell thing with the Bothell controversy with the golf course? And Forterra got involved in that. So we'll be reaching out to Forterra as well and we're working with the North Lake partner, with our North Lake partners to see what can be done on that west side. I think that's, in my opinion, I think that's what we heard immediately from North Lake residents when this property sold and even before that. So that, but obviously, the preservation of those, of the bonsai garden, the Rhodey Garden, obviously very important as well. I think you were, the woman was from Pacific.
Yeah, yeah. And I was in a meeting that she was in about a week or two earlier. And she is very knowledgeable on this stuff. And I don't have her name, but you know,
I do.
If you could reach out to her even, she's been involved with a lot of this kind of stuff, it sounds like, and maybe be able to help get, you know, a little bit of win here for everybody. And then also at the meeting, it was brought up that there were, my understanding, others standing in line that would like that Orca Base location. And, you know, if we could just get something without that ammonia, you know, I would, I'd like to at least see something else there other than an ammonia hazard. When I read that in the paper where they had that spill in Renton and they shut down three and a half miles of 405, well, I live a lot closer than three and a half miles. And I really don't like the idea of an ammonia spill from that very same company.
Right.
So.
Exactly. Thank you, Jeffrey. And Scott, that's Scott, that's being addressed in their review. Is that correct? The ammonia consideration? Okay. And so we'll make sure that, obviously, there's a lengthy process for this. I'm out of pink sheets. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council? Anybody else? Ms. Olay, her Ulay, I'm kidding. Exactly. All right. One more time. We don't normally do this, but go ahead.
Well, good evening again. So you keep talking about a process following a process, and I totally agree with that. Is there a schedule for that? And if there is, can you please make it public? And are there milestones for that?
Okay.
Yeah, that's my question.
All right. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. So Scott, can you talk about that? Before I turn it over completely, Scott, as you also, for the folks that were here and that are aware, because we had this letter that we sent out, which were the comments, we're waiting back for those responses. So the response in large part, not to steal your thunder, Scott, but in large part, it's going to be, we put out quite a very, very detailed letter about what we need to see, what we, the studies that we have to see for the forested buffer, for, you know, roads and all of these, all these different factors, water, air impacts, et cetera. So we're waiting. But it's on the FTP site. And maybe we can, I can get the city clerk to give you that. Or actually, Scott can give it to you.
Yeah, I think you're asking for a schedule. There is, in review, there really isn't a schedule because as we take our time to put our comments together, that 14-page letter, I think most of you got, we send that back to the developer. And it's up to them to compile that information and get those responses back. So there's no timeframe there for them to do that. You know, it's when they do come back with that. So we're waiting for them to respond. So we don't have like, you know, you got to come back within 10 days, 20 days. So right now, we're in the, waiting for a response back to our comment letter. So that's just the phase we're in is the review. And I did talk about that lots, council meeting. I went through some slides and kind of the process where we're at. So there is no hard schedule on reviews. So I can't really put something up. I could, you know, we're, our letter's gone out, which you've seen, and that's one phase of the review. So we're just waiting for a response back. Well, you, we, you know, we review, we take all the information, we reviewed it, and we turn it back to them. And they take their time to get and we turn it back to them, and they take their time to get responses back. They, you know, they have to find, obviously, you know, arborist, or whatever they're looking for when we put in the letter, they have to find those people and get those reports back to us, you know? We don't, we don't put a timeframe on them to compile all the.
There are times, and not that, you know, I don't want to raise, there are times in which, you know, once that's done, we don't see these people again, or sometimes their application, you know, essentially goes dormant. But this is likely, you know, this is a situation in which we put out a very voluminous list of conditions and demands, if you will, and it's going to take some time for them to put all that together. It may even take an opportunity, I just want to be completely transparent with you guys, what we may need to do is sit down with some of their people and our people, just to make sure we're on the same page on what exactly are we asking for? What are the details? If you wanted a forested buffer, or if you want a forest manager, what do you want here? What is that? And that, that kind of meeting could take place just to say, this is what we mean by this. No concessions will be made in that meeting, just clarifications about what we mean by that letter. Scott, is that accurate?
Yeah, that's correct. You know, they'll read our letter, and they'll have some just specific questions that they may not want to put in writing, and they'll just make, you know, come to the office, phone call, whatever, and just clarifying some of the detail that we've asked for. And then, we'll give them that, and then they'll go back and research that, and then come back again.
Okay. So, that's, it's very important, as this ping pong, if you will, continues, you're going to be in the loop, all right? We're going to continue this conversation. I thought I saw an individual filling out a pink sheet. Come on up, please.
My name is Kristen Jones. Mr. Mayor, council. I want to make the point that this is much bigger than just Northlake. Everything refers to Northlake. We are residents of Lake Kilarney, which is immediately east of Warehouser Way and immediately south of Highway 18. And then also, immediately adjacent to Lake Kilarney is Lake Geneva. And ever since, actually, I grew up on Lake Kilarney. And when my husband retired, we came back to Lake Kilarney, and it's been a source of great joy and comfort. But being at the intersection of 5 and 18, especially on the east side of Lake Kilarney, we have tremendous noise. And I noticed that in the letter that the city sent to ESM for the SEPA review, noise is one of the things they mentioned. And on page four, number 16C, it says, regarding noise, consider and address the feasibility of locating the dock doors and the building mechanical equipment away from Warehouser Way. So, we're just concerned about how, how much more noise, how much more pollution is going to be coming our way. Now, in regards to the developers being required to fill out SEPA applications, in many instances where we have tried to protect our little lake, we look at what they fill out for SEPA review answers, and they just don't fill in things. They just leave them blank. And unless citizens help fill in this information, it can just go unnoticed. So, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you very much.[824.82][824.82](APPLAUSE). Is there anybody else who wanted to talk? I thought I saw somebody else in the back filling out a pink sheet. Come on down. And then we'll get your pink sheet when you're done.
About this?
When you're, as soon as you're done, maybe you can hand it over here.
All right.
Okay.
So, Tracy Manalides, lived in Federway for, I don't know, not going to say, going to be 55, so about 100 years. Worked for Warehouser for 36, 36 years, worked for Warehouser. And I read an article in the Federway News, and I had some questions about it. It was about Michael Morano, I believe it was, and some investigation on some zoning, rezoning, and I was just wondering if you could comment on that?
Sure.
Help me understand.
Is that your question?
Yes.
Okay. So, and one of the things I want to avoid, I like, I want to make sure that we have this conversation, and that it's, and that we're able to do this. One of the things I don't want to do, though, is, I have a question, and then we answer it, and then we kind of go back forth, back forth.
Oh, I'm done.
Okay. But stay close, just in case. You never know, I may, we may need you to talk. So, the article that he's talking about, that you're talking about, Ms. Manalides is talking about, is an article that appeared in the Federway Mirror last Friday about our chief of staff, my chief of staff, Brian Wilson. Michael Morales, the former community development director, has made allegations in regard to not signing that letter from October 12. And he separated, that letter was from October 12 of 2015, and then he separated from employment. He was terminated on, in May 1st or thereabouts of this year. And then, just like a month or two ago, we got a word from him that he claims he didn't sign this letter. So, when we received that official, and then he made some initial emails and then followed up, essentially, and I don't want to get too far into it, but then he made that allegation, and now we immediately refer that to a private, to a separate law firm that is doing an investigation, essentially, just to run through, to make sure that nothing is prejudged, and that we have an independent third party looking into the matter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Very nice.
Okay. Oh, and by the way, that report, I am told by legal counsel, that should be either this week or next, in regard to what the circumstances were regarding that.
Great.
All right. Thank you.[996.73][996.73](APPLAUSE). Okay. Oh, and then we need the pink sheet. There we go. Well, when you guys get ready, we need to get the pink sheet back over to the city clerk. Thank you, Tracy. All right, sir.
My name's Ken Christensen. I've lived just outside of Federway, across Warehouser Way for about 12 years. One thing that I was aware of, that I have not seen addressed yet, is that Warehouser, in its design of the administrative building, was lauded for one of the first type of green roof designs, which in effect reduces the amount of area that a structure takes away from the growing, the growing carpet underneath. I haven't seen that addressed in any of the discussion or topics for the design of the food processing plant, so that, that I think also needs to be considered. Another thing is, is that there is, and it's a small item, but that Warehouser Way has become something of a small bike highway for access to get to the, for example, the Federway Transit Center. It's a safe way to go, and that will probably disappear, and that also needs to be considered.
Right.
Sorry?
It is a bike.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.[1096.33][1096.33](APPLAUSE). And then, I think Adei is going to get your pink sheet. Scott, let's make sure we get that added to the list of considerations if it hasn't already been addressed. Okay. Is there anybody else who'd like to comment? All right, everybody, thank you very much. We very appreciate your, very much appreciate your comments. Okay. Now, moving on to the consent agenda, these items have gone through committee, and each or the items can be approved in one swift motion by the council. I'll go ahead and read them and see if any council member wants a separate consideration. Item A is minutes for the September 28, 2016 special meeting, and minutes for the September 29 special meeting, and October 4, 2016 special meeting minutes, and the October 4, 2016 regular meeting minutes. Item B, interlocal cooperative agreement between the cities of Auburn, Federway, Kent, Renton, Seattle, Taquilla, and the Port of Seattle for the Valley Narcotics Enforcement Team. And item C, purchase of fireworks and ammunition disposal trailer from Herd's Custom Machinery Incorporated. Counsel, are there any of the three items that a council member would want to pull for separate consideration? All right. Hearing none. Deputy Mayor Burridge, do you have a motion?
I do. Thank you. I move approval of items A through C on the consent agenda.
Second.
All right. There's been a motion, a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Matters pass unanimously. All right. Now, moving on to public hearing, we will have the 2017-18 biennial budget slash property tax levy as required by RCW 35A.34. I will open the public hearing. First, we'll have a staff presentation from our finance director, Adei Iwuru.
Excuse me. Mr. Mayor, don't we have to continue, move to continue the public hearing?
Oh, we moved that to 7B.
Huh?
We moved that to 7B.
Okay.
I know, I thought the same thing at first, but we're going to continue the discussion about the budget amendment at 7B, under council business.
Point of order, Councilmember Duke Low, that if we do need to continue the hearing, that'll happen after we're done.
Fine, just tell me, okay? Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you. Adei?
This is the public hearing for the proposed biennial budget for 2018. According to the RCW 35A.3400, immediately following the filing of the preliminary budget with the clerk, the clerk shall publish a notice once a week for two consecutive weeks, stating that the preliminary budget for the assuring fiscal biennial has been filed with the clerk, that a copy thereof will be made available to any taxpayer who will call at the clerk's office thereof, that a legislative body of the city will meet. So, I think on September 20, that budget book was made available to the council and made available to the citizens. So, we've met that requirement. The legislative body shall meet on the day fixed, and we fixed the date, and we started, actually, today is also one of those dates, for the purpose of fixing the final budget of the city at the time and place designated in the notice thereof. Any taxpayer may appear and be heard for or against any part of the budget. The hearing may be continued from day to day. And the public hearing dates are today, October 18, and November 1st. In addition to that, this is just other information coming ahead, public hearing today, public hearing November 1st, and the first reading of the property tax, and first reading of the budget ordinance, both on November 1st, and the second reading of the property tax and the budget ordinance on the 15, and the fee schedule resolution on the 15 as well. So, those are the schedule for the.
All right. Counsel, any questions? Does this, just kind of the parameters of our budget discussions? Obviously, we're going to have a continuation of the budget amendment discussions under 7B. Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you. If I could just get clarification on the dates again. So, today's a public hearing, but that, is this the public hearing that starts the two weeks, or, because we haven't finalized the preliminary budget yet, so that's not that, is it?
The two weeks is from September 20
Okay.
For the clerk to advertise the information on the public hearing.
Okay.
So, but we're having, based on those days, we're having two public hearings, which is today and November 1st.
And then we have, but then that's, the public hearing on November 1st is, then we read the ordinance.
Then we read the ordinance.
The first?
So, after the public hearing, you can read the ordinance, and since the ordinance is supposed to be read twice.
Right.
So.
Okay. Okay. Where is the time where we get, we have the opportunity for more council discussion? I know we've talked about a lot of different things.
Okay. As part of the public hearing, you can have that discussion. As far as instruction to me, you know, after the first hearing, where you see this is the budget that is proposed, then you can say, like the mayor's budget amendment earlier, you can say, okay, we want that added, we want this other, and I'll come, before you do the second reading, and make a presentation to also show you, this is the original proposed budget, these are the amendments that you suggested, or that you asked to do, now this is the new number.
Okay.
All right. Counselmember Moore, was that, did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Just for point of clarification, and just so that we have a clear understanding, I know that one of the slides, it says November 1st, first reading property taxes. How's that different than what we were discussing earlier? Just for point of clarification, in terms of what we were discussing during the special council meeting, does that make sense?
Okay, yes, it does.
Thank you.
What we were discussing earlier is sharing the proposed changes that will be made. Also, when you listen, like, the community presentation, you are also taking that in. So, on November 1st, after the first reading, then you can say, okay, these are the changes that we want to make. Until you, until you direct me to make those changes, I cannot really adjust the proposed budget. So, in November, on November 1st, you have to give me those specific questions, after you've deliberated, after you've discussed that, these are the changes that we want to make, this, 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 and I can release those back to you.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Honda, and then Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. So, with the budget amendment that the mayor is proposing this evening, then do you take his information and make changes, or do you wait until November 1st, where council members may have?
Yet, I will wait till that instruction is given to me on November 1st, yes.
Thank you.
And I can bring, if you want, I can bring back some of the proposed changes, based on the conversation that we've been having, if you want, or I can wait for you to summarize that and tell me, okay, the mayor's changes, the one, can sue budget individually, whatever, and we can summarize that.
Well, let me, and let me just clarify that, the way the process works is, I propose a budget, I did propose X, and then we made it, then we, you know, so, my amendment is by, because it's a budget that I propose, is already in that proposal, but it's up to, it's up to council to decide whether, what they're, what you're going to vote on. But my proposal is included in the proposed budget.
So, your amendments are included in the budget that we have?
Yes. They have been, by virtue of the fact that, yes, by virtue of the fact that I have, that I've said, this is my proposed budget, this amendment is inclusive of that.
Okay. Then why do we call it an amendment? Just out of curiosity?
Out of, just for clarity, because we put together a book that's a proposed budget.
Right.
That's essentially a telephone book. And so, to make sure that it's clear, that outside of this book, we've made the amendment to this to add nine additional officers, and the mechanism to do that. It's still part of my proposed budget, that I'm proposing for council to take a look at.
Okay.
Simply because it's not in the book doesn't mean it's not part of the proposed budget.
Well, that's what I was trying to clarify. Thank you.
Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you. So, I guess that this kind of gets at what my initial question was, which is, if we are, if we don't have any other meetings before November 1st, and I don't think we have any other scheduled before November 1st, am I correct? Any special meetings before November?
So, there's a special meeting that's also scheduled for November 1st, if council deliberations are necessary to continue.
Before the meeting.
Right. Right. So, we've discussed a lot of changes, proposed, are proposed changes to the budget. If we don't have a meeting before then, and then we're going to be doing first reading of an ordinance at the regular meeting, when is there the opportunity for council to really discuss these amendments, or to get feedback, or see it in, you know, really, I feel like it's open-ended. I don't feel like we are getting these closed. And so, how do we, when do we get to that process?
Adei?
Based on the calendar that we have now, we have a special meeting on November 1st and a regular meeting on November 1st. we have a special meeting on November 1st and a regular meeting on November 1st. So I think the, the special meeting on November 1st is intended, if needed. So what you're saying now is you need that special meeting on November 1st. And I think this...
Well, and may I, if you don't mind, I, I'm not, I'm suggesting November 1st might be too late, because if we are just then getting into the discussions of what we've, what we've proposed as a council, then, because you need to go back now and do some work and show us some new budget, and then we need to deliberate on that and discuss. If we don't, if we can't do that until November 1st, at a special council meeting that's right before the regular council meeting, I'm not sure that would give us enough time if there are additional changes.
Then if that is the case, which Mark can probably speak to this, if that is the case, then the first reading may be pushed forward. So, but I think I'll let Mark speak to that.
That's correct. We, we can also, we can always push back the first reading to a later date. And the clerk just confirmed that we could push that back even by a week, or as council sees better.
That would, I'd be great with that, I think that'd be preferable, in my opinion.
You know.
Thank you.
And between now and November 1st, I mean, given, if the appropriate time is met, the council can also set up another budget meeting time, or, you know, whatever, a budget session, or whatever, between now and November 1st. So whatever the council wants, as long as we meet the proper notification in terms of our public meeting, I think you can do that.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, council, any other comments just about this, Deputy Mayor? Okay. Deanie, did you have?
Oh, I'm just a little bit confused here, because I thought we took property tax off the table, according to the recommendations here.
Well, an addition, other than the 1% that, that is the cap.
Well, that, yeah.
Yeah, we're allowed 1%.
Right, I know that, yeah.
But in addition, my recommendation was?
No, nothing above the 1%.
That's right.
I want that clear, because I'm not sure that was.
That's right. In fact, Adey, can you please pull, go ahead, Adey, you were going to say something?
Actually, for this year, the 1% is actually a jeopardy, because what the law says is the lower of 1% or the, the inflation factor. According to the state, the inflation factor for this year is actually less than 1%. So what that means, I'll be bringing to the council, you have to pass a resolution that is called, need, that you actually needed to actually levy 1%. Otherwise, it will have to be less than 1%. And I think those are probably some of the things that happened in the past, without you levying, taking the, the need assessment, and passing that additional resolution that you've claimed less than 1%. And that is part of what has kept our tax rate low. So this year, I will be bringing another resolution forward that you need the full 1%, otherwise, what the law says is the lower of the 1% or implicit factor.
Right. Now, can you pull my PowerPoint back up, just in preparation for a discussion on the agenda for seven B? And, and then, here, let me just...
Thank you for that clarification.
I went through this presentation at the special meeting at, starting at 5:00 tonight. And so these are... This is my amendment to add nine officers to our federalway police force to get it to the 140 officer level. I want to get, Councilmember DuKlo made a comment that I, one second. So we're going to go to nine officers, if we can, during this biennial.
Mayor, are there copies of this in the back for the people in the audience?
I think there, yeah, we, we provided 40 copies in the back. There was something I wanted to get to. Councilmember DuKlo brought up, these are the funding options. An additional property tax beyond what is standard, either 1% or the lower, is not recommended. Sales tax not recommended, as it was taken vote of the public. BNO tax not recommended, admissions fee not recommended, and TBD not recommended. So we can leave that up as we get into the later section. Okay. Council, is there any further discussion on this item? Okay, citizen comment, are there any citizen comment about the budget process? And about the, the biennial budget, at least at this stage? Julie, come on up, please. Julie Cleary.
So I'm sure that I'll make a lot of enemies, business-wise, but I work for the City of Kent, and we had a lot of warehouses there, and we had a pretty bad budget. And we passed the BNO, and I sent a copy to Adey, and they passed it pretty quick, and it has surpassed what we thought we were going to take in at the city for revenue. There's a lot of grumbling about it, but I think you should consider it, because I think you guys need it.
And which is that again?
The BNO.
The BNO, okay, great, thank you. The reason why I didn't recommend it, Julie, is because over 90%, I think Kent is a lot different than federalway.
Sure.
90% of the businesses are more in federalway, or less than five people or less.
They're exempt from the BNO tax.
Right, and so...
Huge exemptions.
Yeah.
Yeah, people, I, I can't remember the numbers, I'd have to look, I think it's under 500,000. Yes, there's a huge exemption, so people, small businesses aren't hurt.
But one of the things we are doing is, for, that I'm recommending, is the adjustment of the business registration fees, which would net us each year $360,000.
Yeah, I think you guys need a lot more than that.
All right, thank you, Julie.
I'd consider it.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, anyone else would like to comment on our budget? At least at this stage? And we are going to, at seven B, we're going to go back to this discussion, because I just had the opportunity to present this, but I'm sure council has some questions about this proposal to nine, to add nine officers, and the funding revenue streams for it. Okay, with that, Councilmember DuKlo, do you have a motion to continue the public hearing?
I shall move.
Okay, there's been a motion, a second, to continue the public hearing regarding our budget. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the discussion continues. Moving on to council business, before we get to the budget amendment, we've got the multifamily housing moratorium update. We've got a staff report from our principal planner, Margaret Clark.
Good evening, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbidge, members of the City Council, citizens. My name is Margaret Clark, and I'm with the Community Development Department. This evening, we will be briefing the multifamily, the City Council on the multifamily moratorium. And I'm looking for my colleague here, Jeff Watson, who will also be joining me for part of the presentation. I just want to make it really clear that this is a briefing, and we're not asking for any action this afternoon, this evening. What we're going to ask for is your feedback. So for background purposes, the City Council adopted a six-month moratorium on multifamily housing on June 7, 2016. The moratorium covers all multifamily and senior housing, except for duplexes, triplexes, accessory dwelling units, and townhouses. The reason for the moratorium was to give the city time to review multifamily zoning and, and development regulations, and, and to determine if these regulations are appropriate for the type of multifamily development that council envisions for the city. Staff briefed the planning commission on this topic on October 5, 2016. The commission was generally in favor of the proposed amendments, with exception of number 16, which is related to requiring multifamily complexes to provide supportive services such as counseling. You've got their, their draft minutes in your packet. The reason for their concern was that if we were to adopt such an amendment, there would, they thought there would be a perception that we were sort of singling out and stereotyping residents of multifamily development. So staff is requesting that we not proceed with that one. So what I'm going to cover this evening is the relationship between the Growth Management Act, which is the GMA, and comprehensive planning, and then the relationship between the GMA and the comprehensive plan, and funding for transportation facilities. We've come up with two approaches. One would be changes to our code amendments, and the second one would be making, requesting changes at the legislative level. We're also going to talk about impacts of adopting these changes, and what we call unintended consequences. So as far as the GMA and the comprehensive plan go, the comprehensive plan must comply with the Growth Management Act, it must comply with the Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2040 Plan, and it must comply with the countywide planning policies. That would be the King County wide plan policies. The comprehensive plan must identify sufficient land for housing. It must also demonstrate that we have enough land that is zoned appropriately, so that we would have enough capacity to accommodate our housing targets. The comprehensive plan must also provide for affordable housing. The countywide planning policies require jurisdictions to address the need for housing, housing affordable to households with moderate low and very low incomes, including those with special needs. The 2006 to 2031 housing target is 8,111 new residential units. At the end of 2012, the city had a capacity for 8,443 new residential units. We had adequate capacity. And that was, divided up between 2,412 single-family units and 6,030 multifamily units. So let's talk a little bit about the role of the Puget Sound Regional Council, PSRC. The GMA requires PSRC to certify that local comprehensive plans comply with Vision 2040 and requirements of the GME. As you remember, last year, we did receive our certification from PSRC. The certification of local comprehensive plans is necessary to apply for PSRC funding or proceed with projects submitted into what's called the Regional Transportation Program, regardless of where the funding is coming from. The Department of Commerce, which is the State Department of Commerce, also has a role. Their role is as a nominating agency for transportation improvement grants from the Transportation Improvement Board. One of the criteria is compliance with the GMA. Compliance is defined as having completed the latest comprehensive update on time, which we did, and no pending actions, remands, or challenges before the Growth Management Hearings Board. And we are, we are good in that respect. Compliance with the GMA is also a requirement for obtaining grants from the Washington State Improvement Transportation Board, and we will call that the TIB. This is just an example, examples of grants that we have received over the years from different funding sources. And one of the criteria for getting these grants was compliance with the GME. Our comp plan had to be in compliance. If you just look at these, you can see some of these amounts are quite large. In fact, I was talking to Rick Perez, and he says approximately 50% of the money to, to build our roads come from grants. So let's talk a little bit about some potential code amendments. We had to come up with a certain cutoff, and I believe it came from the mayor's office suggestion that these amendments would only apply to multifamily housing with more than 100 units. We have 18 potential amendments in the staff report, we're proposing to delete the one. And so what I'd like to do is just summarize them, instead of going through all 17 of them. We did that at Planning Commission, and it became pretty tedious. So I'm hoping that you've read the report, and if you have questions, you can ask them. So we have them separated into like park-in-related amendments, and an example of that would be to require underground parking. We have a number of amendments related to improving livability. And an example would be require a certain percentage of the gross floor area of the apartment building to be common areas for social gathering. Public Works is proposing some solid waste-related requirements. And an example would be to require operational plans for solid waste, storage, and conveyance, whether interior or exterior, and also providing enough space for the receptacles. Security-related amendments, an example would be you require security cameras in shared areas. Example lobby, community rooms, playgrounds. Because as, as, as housing becomes more dense, people run into each other a little bit more, and there could be more opportunities for altercations. So we thought this would be a, a good proposal. And then a miscellaneous one would be require impact fees to offset the need for calls by the police and fire departments. A legislative approach would be the lobby to have the State Housing Finance Commission adopt a rule requiring a mix of affordable and market-rate housing units when tax credits are awarded. Right now, when tax credits are awarded, they have to provide all units to be affordable at what's called 60% of area median income. So let's, let's talk about some impacts of adopting changes. One would be increased development costs. For a structured park-in, that would add $26,000 approximately per park-in space. And if we require a portion of the gross floor area to be common areas, that would reduce the potential number of units and probably drive the cost of development up. I'd like to turn to Jeff now, to talk about this section, if I may.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. What we want to talk about are unintended consequences of potentially limiting affordable housing. And what we're really referring to is the Fair Housing Act, which was passed as a part of the Civil Rights Acts in the 1960s. And the, the Fair Housing Act was, or is intended to ensure that all people have access to, to housing. And it provides protections, especially for, for people, protected classes, people of color, gender, family size, a number of things like that. And the courts have held that the Fair Housing Act might be violated where the effect of land use or zoning decisions discriminates against minorities, insofar as they may be deprived of, of housing opportunities. And it's not necessary to prove that officials intended to discriminate against minorities in denying specific housing projects or, or otherwise making land use decisions. It can be whatever the effect of, of those decisions are, again, whether it was intended or not. One of the things that is also important to share with you is HUD, in 2015, released a new rule around fair housing, and what they refer to as affirmatively furthering fair housing. And we're still working out what that rule might mean, but generally, one of the things that it means is, is that the community needs to look at its policies and regulations and make a determination as to whether those policies and regulations may in fact have provisions in them that could put the, the community in a position to where it is in fact limiting access to housing by certain individuals. So I'm, with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Margaret.
We also wanted to kind of remind you about the school district, district impact fees. The school district was very concerned about all the multifamily moving into federalway. So for calendar year 2016, they increased the school impact fee for multifamily units from $1,834 to $9,273 per unit. For calendar year 2017, they decreased it a bit, down to $8,386. But what this fee increase will probably do, it will probably also increase the cost to develop multifamily. And we, we still haven't seen what will happen then, but I just wanted to bring that, to bring that up to you. So in summary, all code amendments are sent to the Department of Commerce, which then transmits them to other agencies, including PSRC for review. And our comprehensive plan also went to the Department of Commerce, and then was sent to all of the agencies. So if changes are made to the zoning code that result in a decrease in the capacity for new residential units, and the inability for the city to meet its targets, this may result in the city becoming less competitive in obtaining federal and state grants. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Councilmember Maloney, Councilmember Moore, then Councilmember Honda.
Thank you, thank you, Margaret. And I appreciate the, the information you gave us, and all the work that's been done on this. So I, you went, you did go through it pretty quickly. In terms of where we are right now, can you remind me where we are in terms of the housing and the...
Or targets?
Or targets.
Okay.
Yes.
Actually, I do have, we do have a slide. This is sort of just a recap in more, in more detail. But between the beginning of 2006 and September 11, 16, I ran a report and a mandate. And we, between that time, 1,038 single-family units were built, 1,055 multifamily, 440 housing, and 100 units were demolished. So we gained 2,437. If we look at... If we look at that as an average, there's nothing that says we have to do a certain average per year, but that's a way of measuring our progress. So, if we looked at per units per year during that time, we averaged 227 units. In order to meet our target, we would have to average over a 35-year, 25-year period, 324 units per year. And a lot of what we achieved was actually from September 13 to November 16. We achieved 100, 288 multifamily, and senior housing out of the 1,499 units over the 10-year period. So, we have a remaining target of 5,666 units, which would require an average of 397 units per year in order for us to achieve our targets by 2031.
Okay. So, we would have to add 397 multifamily units.
On an average.
On an average, per year?
Per year.
Okay. And they're just multifamily? It doesn't mean low income or anything like that?
It doesn't, but we also have targets for the different sectors of affordability. But these are the total units.
Okay. Because we're not talking about that, we're only talking about multifamily at the moment, correct? Right?
Well, right.
Okay. So, but what Jeff was talking about really leads into the affordable housing. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, it is, and the reason that we're bringing it up is just to make the council aware of the potential for unintended consequences. Part of the reason that's important for the city is because while the Fair Housing Act really applies throughout the nation, applies to any community, it's especially important for communities that receive direct federal funding, such as we do, like CDBG, in part because one of the things that we have to do on an annual basis with regard to our annual action plan to receive our funds annually is we submit a certification that says we are going to affirmatively further fair housing and look for ways to ensure that protected classes have access to housing.
Okay. Thank you. And there are targets for that as well, correct?
There are not specific targets for it. Generally, it's a situation where if there are complaints about fair housing, if people feel that they have been discriminated against, one of the things that can happen is investigators can come in and look at what's going on in a community, and they will look at not just a landlord or landlords who may have been, again, intentionally or unintentionally discriminating against folks, but there aren't specific target numbers. But one of the things, again, that is important about it is that we do have a responsibility as a recipient of federal funds to look for ways to ensure that people have access to housing.
Thank you. So, compared to the communities surrounding us, are we, I recall a report we got when we first did this, we were looking at a report that showed that we actually have a higher amount of affordable and low-income housing than the surrounding communities. Is that correct? Or was that?
I still have that.
Okay.
I think the deputy mayor, while you're looking for that, deputy mayor, were you done?
Well, kind of.
I was going to, thank you. I was going to refer to the same.
Oh, well, then...
Same information, actually, because I had saved a chart.
Oh, good.
Before that refers to the income levels at the 31% to 50% of income levels. We would need 12% of total housing supply, and we're at 31.4%.
That was what I was thinking as well.
Deputy Burbridge, I actually updated that information. I have it with me.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
What I was looking for is, I was looking for the other communities.
Mm-hmm.
Here they are. I don't have a slide with this info. But what it shows is, for example, Renton has, let's see, I could, maybe I'll just bring it up here. We are sort of in the middle. We're not way higher than other communities as far as what we provide, because the total for all of affordable in federal way is 48.6%.
Okay.
Auburn, 46.5; Burien, 48.9; Kent, 49; C-TAC, 54.79. And that's just bringing it all together, but I think what would be very helpful is if I showed you how it's broken out.
Yeah. Okay.
So, what deputy mayor was talking about was in the countywide planning policies, there's this policy that 16% of the total housing supply should be affordable to what's called moderate income levels, 12% to low, and 12% to very low. What I did was the most up-to-date information we have is the 2010 to the 2014, what's called American Community Survey, five-year estimates. I took the recent projects, the DEVCO projects and SHAG, and I brought them up to date, but I could only do it for rental because we don't have the information for owner-occupied. So, right now, you'll see that we exceed our targets for moderate, we exceed for rental, we exceed it for low, but we don't have enough rentals for very low-income people. Owner-occupied, we're exceeding it for moderate, but we don't have enough for low and very low for people to purchase. And then when owner-occupied and rental units are combined, the city meets its affordable targets for moderate and low, but not for very low. Does that help?
Yes. So, final question, it does very much. Thank you. Final question. So, if we were to adopt the proposal, the proposed changes that you're presenting tonight, I mean, I know we're not voting tonight, but if we were to adopt those, would we still be able to get to the levels for the very low income and the others that we're already too low on through the 100 units or less?
Yeah.
And still go the other way with the other multifamily?
You know, in order to provide housing for the low and the very low, it has to be, for example, like how Arch does it on the east side, because the tax, I have something else to show you. For the tax credits, they have to provide at 60%, no more than 60%, which is the moderate income level. It falls between the 50 to the 80. And what we did for you is that these are what the rents would be at 60% of AMI. So, this is, for example, what Kids Corner, Park 16 would be renting at, and then the city has a requirement that if there are 25 or more multifamily units, 5% have to be affordable at 50% of AMI. So, 5% of all of the DEVCO projects have to be affordable at 50%, so these would be the rents. What we did was we called all of the apartment buildings in federal way and got rents, and this is how they arrange. For studios from 616 to 1,081, one bedrooms, 603 to 1921, two bedrooms, it's kind of puzzling that the top are about the same for these two. Two bedrooms, 706 to 1929, three bedrooms, 925 to 3515, and four bedrooms, actually the top is less. And we don't have, the only five-bedroom apartments we have right now are with the new DEVCO projects.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's very helpful.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, we had Councilmember Moore, then Councilmember Honda, then Councilmember Copac.
Margaret, thank you so much for, both of you guys, thank you so much for your presentation. On slide number 17, I wanted you to kind of go into details to what does it mean, and I'll hold off my question until you get there.
Okay.
Under miscellaneous, I wanted you to kind of go into details to what do you mean by that and how do you foresee that?
Well, you know, this is very high-level briefing. We're coming to you to say, okay, we like the site, look into it further. We really don't have any details on this, but what we've heard is from the police department is that they've been getting lots of calls since we've gotten all these apartments, so it's impacting their finances. So, this would be a way to offset the need that's being generated by all those calls. So, we would have to look into it further if the council decided that they wanted to give us direction to pursue it.
And I think my feedback, because I welcomed that idea, I think it'd be a really good one to look into, and I guess my other question, my last question, is the amendments that are suggested potentially, how are there other jurisdictions that have those similar ordinances in place?
A lot of this information we got actually from the east coast cities, so we'd have to look around at our south King County cities, too. I have a feeling that they don't have some of these that we're proposing, but we'll have our intern look into some more.
Okay. Councilmember Honda?
Thanks. Thanks, Margaret. I have just three questions. The school district fees, how do they compare to other cities around us?
Well, the school district covers...
I know. It covers...
Yeah. I don't know. I have not looked into it.
Okay.
We probably could. We could contact different school districts.
Have you heard from any developers that that's a concern to them?
This is through the grapevine. I did not hear this directly, but what I heard was that the market rate housing that was coming in at first in 348, we were told that they backed off because of the school district fees.
Interesting. Okay. The requirements, such as the one up here for the cameras, would that be, would those be retroactive to the existing multifamily?
I'm not sure if we can do that. We'd have to check with legal.
Okay. And then my last question, senior housing, such as the units at Brookdale Foundation House and Village Green, are they counted as multifamily?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Councilmember Copac. Oh, and then Councilmember Duke.
Margaret and Jeff, thank you for your presentation. I had the opportunity to go to the Planning Commission meeting and hear this presentation and hear the questions that were presented by the planning commissioners, and certainly appreciate the good work that they're doing in that commission and the support that you're giving them. Kind of looking at this, you know, just trying to get some context on your report tonight. I think one of the things that I heard was that there's some, like, unintended consequences by changing zoning, removing inventory for multifamily housing, that that could jeopardize our funding. I also understand that the school, and we certainly approved it, but the school made a decision that the impact of multifamily was having a much higher, was having a much, or multifamily housing coming into the community was having a much higher impact on the school district than they had previously thought. And so, with a new formula, they came up with the number that they did, and I think we've certainly seen things slow down as a result. Doing the moratorium, I think, really has given us the opportunity to pull back and to kind of take a breath here and look at how we want to move forward. And I guess the question is, for me, is we have, we have, we have goals that have been stated by Vision 2040, and we have the reality of the marketplace, and we have, I think, King County has much higher housing costs than can be supported by the goals that I see, or at least I see from the presentations that I've seen. So, the question is, how perilous is our funding sources based on our current actions? And is there something that the council should be really looking at, or is this more about just removing inventory that the concern rests with?
If I understand your question correctly...
It's a long question.
What you're asking with regard to the funding that the city receives from CDBG, that is that funding potentially at peril of being removed from the city? I would say that that's a really difficult question to answer. At this point, one of the things that we're doing with regard to HUD's new rule around fair housing, we have to prepare what is called an assessment of fair housing, and we will be doing that in cooperation with the county and other jurisdictions that receive federal funding in the county. And we are, myself, my colleagues in the county and in other cities in the county, have some disagreement about exactly what the rule will mean for us, both broadly in a countywide basis as well as community to community. In fact, we are participating in a workshop next week at HUD headquarters in Seattle that, the subject of that workshop is fair housing and the new rule and the requirement of developing this assessment of fair housing. So, we'll be in a better position to answer that question after the workshop next week. So, it's, it really, it's a complicated, a complicated situation, and I don't think there is really a straightforward answer that if we do X, you know, Y is going to happen.
Okay. All right. Well, I think, just to follow up, I think that there's a lot of good work that's being done by the staff in basically acting on the moratorium and doing the studies that are necessary. How soon do you think that you will be able to come back to the council with a recommendation on multifamily housing?
Well, what we would like is to get some direction from the council and then come back to them, go back and do our work, and then come back to you.
Okay. So, the information that you gave us tonight, is that you're looking for specific feedback on that?
Right.
Okay. I would ask that we had a little bit more understanding of the impacts of these different things that you're proposing.
Okay. Well, we'll look at the...
I'd like to be more informed.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Duke, and then Deputy Mayor Burbridge.
Yeah, I need some more time to digest these things. And first of all, I'd like to ask for a copy of your presentation.
Sure.
That would really help me so I could review that. And yeah, I need to look at comparison charts and things like that before I can, before I can make any kind of decision here. And I know everybody blames everything on the low income, but they're not guilty of everything.
No.
And they do need a place to live.
Absolutely.
And I certainly don't want our city just to be full of low income. I want it to have a range of incomes here, from the very wealthy, which we have, to the poor who need some assistance in being able to live because they still can be productive citizens. So, I would like to have, please, a copy of your presentation and then some more information about what we have and the makeup of the people that reside here.
Okay.
As good as you can do.
All right.
But I know you can at least give me your presentation.
We can give you, again, the information that we passed out earlier this year.
Yeah.
Because we don't have the data to update it.
Well, that's okay. That'll be just fine.
Okay.
I don't have that. Okay? Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Burbridge, then Councilmember Asefadoss.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation. I think this is a good beginning step for us in this process, but there is a lot more to take a very serious look at, a lot of detail. I, you know, getting information from other jurisdictions would be extremely helpful. I think we always need to have some benchmarks to help us understand how we compare, where we should be, where we want to be, what the needs are in other jurisdictions, and what their resources are as well. And I agree that we're looking for a range of housing in federal way. We've always had a range here, and we need to maintain that in order to be a healthy city. And I'm hearing you say, too, that on the east side, perhaps using the arch structure and process, they've been able to take a different kind of look at the very low needs...
I think so, but I don't have that much information. I will, I'll give them a call, but that's...
Okay.
It seems like in order to provide a very low-income housing, you have to do a lot more subsidization.
Right. And if that's one way to achieve that and still have a range of housing available to our total community and the people who want to live here, I, you know, I think we'd be all willing to take a look at other, you know, other opportunities, other structures that we could make use of. So, those are some beginning ideas and suggestions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Asefadoss, and then Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. So, when we're talking about the...
So when we're talking about the very low income, are we also considering the voucher holders or public housing, for instance?
I, I don't know, I'd have to check with King County, I'm assuming so. Because I don't know at what income level you have to be in order to qualify for Section 8.
Very low for the most part.
Very low?
Yeah, so, so that would be my one, you know, question.
I think that that one thing to understand about the Section 8 vouchers is while they are provided to very low income persons, that, and there are, there are really two different kinds of Section 8 programs. There are Section 8 projects where all of the units in a project are Section 8 based and it stays with the unit. If someone were to move from there, they don't take that Section 8 benefit with them. There's also the specific Section 8 vouchers that are held by someone and they can move from place to place with them. And really, they have the opportunity to take that voucher to wherever they would choose as long as the landlord is willing to accept it. And what that voucher means is that they have to pay no more than 30% of their income for rent. And the difference between the 30% of their income and whatever the rent is, is paid by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So, you know, if they make a hundred dollars a month, they pay thirty dollars a month for their rent. If the rent is twelve hundred dollars, then the Department of Housing and Urban Development pays eleven hundred and eighty, excuse me, eleven hundred and seventy dollars a month. So, so the extent to which Section 8 vouchers are prevalent in the community doesn't, doesn't per se affect how much very low income housing we need to have. There's not a direct correlation between those two.
But at least we have residents who are being served in our community that are very low income.
Some, but not, not the targets that we, we need to be reaching. And part of the challenge with that, with regard to constructing that housing and maintaining that housing is the cost of construction is what the cost of construction is. You know, if construction is, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, it doesn't matter whether it's for very low income apartment building or for a market rate. And so the, as Mayor Burridge alluded to, the, what's necessary in that case is a great deal of subsidy to essentially drive down the cost of developing that apartment or drive down the cost of what would be otherwise had to be supported by debt service. So from that point of view, it, it's more difficult to construct housing for very low income.
Okay, one more question, I'm sorry. When you were talking about unintended consequences, you know, potential, and you talk about fair housing issues. So if what is being proposed is, not multifamily, but what is it called? The different levels.
Mixed use, a range?
Yeah, the different levels, market rate and then, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say. So then, why would that be, why would that have an intended consequences when you're already covering the low income or...
The potential concern that, that we have is, to the extent that we may be enacting new requirements that will essentially drive up the cost of constructing new housing, it is possible that that could be viewed as something that is making it more difficult for people to afford the housing in the community because the cost of creating that housing and therefore the cost of renting and maintaining that housing is going up, therefore people would not necessarily be able to afford it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Honda.
Thank you very much. I was watching a King County council meeting several months ago and they were talking about this issue and they actually listed the income levels for very low, moderately low and the third one. And I've asked this before, but, and they're different per cities in King County. What would be very low in the city of Seattle is different than what is considered here in Federal Way? Do you have those numbers for Federal Way?
I think I have them.
Actually Deputy Mayor has, oh, okay.
And then my other question, while you're looking for that, is for the very low units that we don't have enough of, are those tenants required to pay first, last and security? And if they are, how could they ever afford to rent anything?
I can't speak for all landlords, but that is often the case, is that they are required to pay first, last and security deposit, which makes it more difficult for, for very low income persons or households to get into housing. And again, that goes back to the whole issue of what other resources are available, what subsidies are available to create that housing. Generally, housing that is created to serve low and very low income persons is created by agencies that understand those barriers. And so typically, they're not going to require first, last and security deposit. They may require a security deposit and the first month, but they're not going to ask for the last. And generally, the, the rent is going to be substantially lower in order to make it affordable for those folks to begin with.
When I talk with our homeless individuals in Federal Way that are living in their cars and sleeping in tents at the state park, many of them have enough money to pay rent, but they don't have the money for first, last and security. And until we can maybe as a city or as a community help these folks get that, the funding that they need to pay those fees, we're still going to have an issue with housing, the very low income folks.
There's, there's no question about that. Unfortunately, what you're describing is a very common situation that is not unique to Federal Way. It exists actually all across the country where families can afford to pay the monthly rent, but they, but they don't make enough to save up the first, last and security deposit. That's where the organizations and the agencies that we work with can come in and help some folks, but we don't have the resources to help all of those who need that kind of help.
Is there anything that anyone is doing in this country or even in Canada? They've done some rather interesting things to house their homeless that can help? Can they, can we offer incentives to landlords to take away the first and the last in security? Is, what could we do to make this happen?
There are, I think there are a number of things that people are working on. Not all landlords are willing to, to accept different conditions. There are some landlords that are willing to work with agencies that are working with low income or very low income households to get them in. And generally, what, what might happen is an agency may come in and provide, say, the security deposit and the homeowners may have to come up with the first month's rent and the agency essentially is on the hook until they can, the household can pay the last month's to the landlord to essentially complete that kind of a package. You know, otherwise, it really comes down to can we create or can we generate more resources to help serve these folks? And a lot of that comes to how much funding may be available on federal, state and local level for those things. We have agencies that provide that kind of a service, but again, the resources that they have for that are limited and they really try to spread it across as many folks as they can in order to help as many as they can. I think that, that, you talk about Canada. Canada has, I think, a little different point of view with regard to a safety net than we have in this country. And so it's a little challenging, you know, it's a little bit of an apples and oranges comparison there unfortunately.
Okay, I, you know, and I have been a landlord before and I understand how important it is to have as a landlord the security of that funding if something happens. But if, we're talking multifamily where there's many, many units, it seems as if maybe we could offer some incentives to the owner so that, that goes away and that we can get some of these people housed.
Well, and generally, that, that kind of work and those negotiations take place with the agencies that we work with, such as Catholic Community Services, the YWCA, the Multi Service Center and the hardworking folks that, that work with the families that are in the circumstances that we're talking about.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. So a couple of questions that are kind of going to ping pong around a little bit. In terms of the Section 8 housing, I seem to recall at previous, in previous meetings, we were told that the people with the vouchers, there's no way to really count them or know how many are living in the community, is that correct?
That's not entirely correct.
Okay.
We do have some access to information from the King County Housing Authority is responsible for and manages the voucher program, so we can get that information, yes.
Okay, but you, but, okay, thank you. So, but are you telling us, and am I understanding correctly from the conversation with Lydia, that that doesn't really count toward our low income housings per se?
Not per se, no.
Okay.
Because again, someone who has a voucher can literally go anywhere in this community. And, and whether it's multifamily or single family, if the landlord is willing to accept that voucher, then, then the voucher holder, again, only has to pay 30% of their income to, for rent and the difference is made up by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So part of the, part of the challenge though is not all landlords are willing to accept Section 8 vouchers and the families that have Section 8 vouchers because there's no requirement that they do that, no requirement in law that they have to do that. There are some moves afoot to, at least in the state of Washington, to, to require landlords to accept what is called the source of income for the payment of their rent.
Okay, and so even though you, I think you believe, I believe earlier you said there's no, there are no targets for low income or affordable housing, is that correct? You said there are no specific targets.
Well, I, I think that, to be clear, as Margaret pointed out, there are targets within the context of the Growth Management Act.
Okay.
What, what I was referring to is there are not specific targets outlined by the Fair Housing Act with regard to how much affordable housing you have to have at various levels. But if, if, if a community were to be, were to be investigated for fair housing conditions, one of the things that would be looked at is, which is how much, how much do you have and what efforts are you making to ensure that if there's a need for more, you are in some way trying to encourage more.
Okay, and so that's kind of where I was going with that, it's kind of subjective. And there's no way to, I mean, so it almost seems as if we could have a fair amount of the low income and affordable housing and also have a good amount of people using Section 8 voucher, vouchers that are not necessarily duplicative, they're, you know, next to each other basically. And so we could literally be over our amount. And I'm just speaking in terms of targets, I'm not speaking in terms of people or anything like that, but over the amount of families or individuals who are at a certain income level.
I think Margaret could probably speak to, to the, how the GMA looks at the number of, of low income households in the community as opposed to targets for affordable housing. And I think that those are two different things.
Okay.
Let's go back then. And I think that Councilmember Honda also had a question that we didn't answer, but so we'll go back to you.
And then I have one more question after this too.
So the way that the countywide planning policies address affordable housing and they have to comply with the GMA is that a certain percentage of our supply have to be affordable to those people at these different levels. So sixteen percent at moderate and twelve percent at low and very low, which means that these would be people, say for example, below 30%, this is the incomes that would qualify. Thirty to fifty, these are the incomes, and it depends on the number of people in the household. And then from fifty to eighty, for example, if you had a one person household, they couldn't make more than fifty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. And this ties into, I think, the question that Councilmember Honda had. You said you were looking at the King County council meeting and they said it varied throughout?
Throughout cities in King County.
Um, throughout cities in King County. Right, these household limits are used throughout King County, so I'm not sure what they were referring to. Because King County, what they do is they get the numbers from HUD every year and they adjust it for our area. But every city and King County uses the same. And that's why we're finding that even though there might be affordable, what we think is affordable housing in Seattle, it's not really affordable. And, but when people come down here, it's equivalent to our market rate housing just because of what the, the price of the housing basically. And I hope I made sense there.
You did, thank you.
Okay, and so my final question is, when, as you, as you do go through and look at other communities and what their levels are, where they are in their targets, could we look at more affluent communities as well, like Bellevue and some of those areas? I want to see where we stack up in relation to them. And finally, not a question, but just in support of all the work you've done, I'm very much in support of everything you've done so far, with the exception of that one question that the planning commission suggested not, you know, not pursuing. I think it was eighteen or whatever it was. So I would continue doing what you're doing and, and then just go forth with the other questions that we've brought forward, because you said you needed some directions. That's what I'm providing, thank you.
All right, Council, Councilmember Sephardos.
Yeah, just a comment, and I think it adds a little bit to what you were saying, Susan, is that on the east side, they do have the, where the source of income and they can't deny Section 8 voucher holders housing. So that's something maybe we could consider doing here also. But also, the other thing is, a lot of Section 8 voucher holders cannot find housing at all, even though they do have their vouchers. And so they are at risk of losing that voucher if they don't find housing within a lot of time. And a lot of them, of course, because it's affordable here, they look in South King County. And even there, they can't find housing because of the vacancy rate and/or could be discrimination for whatever reason. So just wanted to add that to the conversation.
All right, council, any other discussion on this? All right, no action is requested, anything else?
Just wanted to follow up on Councilmember Maloney's comment. We were able to get Section 8 voucher information for Federal Way, but when I requested it for the rest of the cities from the King County Housing Authority, they never responded. So maybe we'll go a different route, maybe Jeff has more connections that I don't have.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now moving on to B, the discussion, this was the continuation of the earlier meeting regarding the budget amendment. Yes, sir?
Can I ask Margaret a question?
For the record, yeah, go ahead, go ahead Margaret, go ahead Terry.
In your assessment, your school assessment of, you know, eight thousand plus per student, does that include the consideration for the state's requirement for public basic education?
You know, I don't have that answer. All I know is that's the impact fee per multifamily unit.
Because it seems like that number should be much less when the state finally does their thing.
Yeah, I don't know.
Which would help our builders.
Yeah, we could, we could see if we can find that answer. We can see if we can find that answer for you, okay? And I'll give you my card.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, now moving on, Ade, is there any way you can help us get to the portion of the PowerPoint? All right, now, moving on. Ade, is there any way you can help us get to the, the portion of the PowerPoint where, and let's go with that graph at the very end of the, of my PowerPoint. I had, just to bring us back in time, a couple of hours, I had just finished providing, summarizing my biennial budget amendment, which is now incorporated into the, my proposed budget. And so, let's go to the very end of that graph. So, yeah, that's right. So, very last slide, just as a starting point. Keep going. The very last slide, before questions. Right there. Okay, that, again, gives us a, a good conversation starter. Councilmember Honda?
Thank you. So, I have a few questions, and if you want to stop me because I'm going too long, let me know. On the business registration fees, if it's based on the number of employees, does someone from the city go and count the employees? Or do we? Will the employer have to tell us? Do, does the full-time employee count as one person, and a part-time employee count as a half a person? And when would these fees start? Would it be when they renew their license?
As of now, based on the record that we have, we depend on the individual company disclosing how many employees they have. If this become, and that is part of what I was mentioning earlier, that if we go to a full-blown tax revenue, I probably would need, we probably would need additional employee in the finance. So, as of now, it is self-reporting. And as a way that we can, as we move along, if we have an employee, a company that reports fifty employees one time, then when they come in to renew, and they say it's thirty, well, that is sign of trouble. So, based on what we have, we are projecting what those companies are reporting to us. If we get really big, and we want to actively start auditing, we will require additional staff. So, this is based on what they're reporting.
So, if I heard you right, at this time, we do already know how many, like, let's say, sub-zero ice cream. We know how many employees they hire at this point. So, does a part-time employee count as a half a person?
Half a person would be considered half FTE. So, it is not considered a four-one.
Okay. For the utility tax at Lake Haven, when did we sign the franchise agreement that we're under right now?
The utility tax, based on the current ordinances that we have, I think what it would take is basically, and I was talking to Mark earlier, is the council passing a resolution to include Lake Haven, and it will take effect.
She was asking, when was the current franchise agreement? Signed, or?
That, there's a thirty-day clause.
Right, but when, when was that current agreement?
The current agreement, if you do not take the thirty-day clause, I think it goes through two thousand and nineteen.
Mayor Farrell, I believe it was signed in early twenty sixteen. I don't have the specific month, but I believe it was February or March.
Okay, I, I thought it was this year. That's why I'm, I'm asking. When the mayor has talked with Lake Haven folks, are they going to pass this increase on to the ratepayer? And do we know what that increase would be?
They have not indicated. We, we let them know what we were planning, and they're going to be discussing among themselves.
And then, will they let us know that? Because I am concerned about passing something on to the ratepayer. And as for-
This would be, but they are the only utility that operates in the city of Federal Way that does not pay utility tax.
And as for the funding of the new police officers, I'm glad that we will be applying for the COPS grant, but what happens if we are not given the COPS grant in twenty eighteen? Then how do we fund the five?
Well, we would only, the plan is to hire five pursuant to a COPS grant. So, if we do not, you know, we're going to apply for those next year. We're going to, we're eligible by up to six. If, depending on, we'll have to reassess if we don't get all five. But with the, the idea is, we can only hire as many as we can afford.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, we're not going to hire five officers if we don't have the funding for them.
So, in your, in the, the big phone book edition, the unfunded request was for, to hire two additional officers? And that was not, that was not, that was not allowed?
Well, it wasn't originally adopted at, as part of that. We had to find additional revenue. And once, you know, we took a look at the revenue options, now we're at the, at the nine, four in seventeen, and five in eighteen.
My concern with using the utility tax on Lake Haven to fund the officers, we were having discussions about using that for other things in this budget earlier, before the nine police officers came along. I'm not against hiring nine police officers. I think the more police officers we have, the better for our community. But I am concerned that, as we go into twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, that our budget allows us to keep everyone fully employed, that we have employed now, and that we may need even another revenue stream. And, and that is my concern, is that we're asking for a lot. I don't disagree with hiring more police officers, but I, I'm just wondering, we were talking about this before, the nine police officers came up. So, how are we going to make up that funding that we were talking about that we needed?
We got it right there. The business and license, and the business license adjustment and the adjusted utility tax, will pay, along with COPS grants, will pay for the officers, down to the dollar. So-
Well, I'm talking about other things-
I'm sorry, I wasn't finished. So, the fact of the matter is, this community needs and deserves greater police protection. We need to be at the ratio of which we've historically been at, which is one point four officers per one thousand. We, under the original budget that was proposed, in order to, we couldn't, under your prior point, we can't propose officers without additional revenue stream. Once, you know, the decision was made to fully staff to one forty, we need to find additional revenue streams. In order to, in order to, clearly, what we don't want to do is increase taxes more than, more than necessary. So, you know, and that's why we took a look at all of those funding options, and taking a look at the possible revenue options. The three, obviously, permit fees, obviously, recapture our costs, but the two main ones, the business registration fees and the equal application. Equal application of the current utility tax gets us, along with the, with the COPS grants, gets us to the nine officers within the biennial.
I'm not against hiring the officers. What I'm concerned about is the rest of the things in the budget being able to be funded. That's what my concern is. But I'm not, I'm certainly not against hiring officers. I, I agree that we need them.
Okay. Councilmember Maloney, then, and Councilmember Asefa Dawson?
Thank you. So, okay. In terms of the business registration fees, I, I under, I actually knew already that Kent had a BNO tax, but thank you, Julie, for talking about that. I'm wondering if we have information on what these proposed fees look like compared to surrounding communities that might have some other similar type of fees? And/or how they compare to the BNO taxes in, in the surrounding communities?
I, I would say before, just in regard to the Transportation Benefit District, one of the key things about that, about that taxation, is the, just in regard to its impact, that would be a twenty-dollar tab fee on each registered car. And based on sound trends at three being on the ballot, which would add that cost on to each car, that was one of the principal reasons why we did not take a look, why, why that's not recommended, because of the impact. But as to your question, Ade, do you have any information in regard to nearby jurisdictions in regard to revenue sources? And, and what they net?
I do not know how much they net, but I do know there are a couple of them that have it. I think Auburn has it. A couple of entities that I talked to, they do have it, but I don't remember how much they net.
The Transportation Benefit District, the car tab fee?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I, I wasn't asking about that. I, I said the business registration fees.
Okay. Do we know what that, the business registration fee, do you know?
The what?
The business registration fee. Do you know what that nets in other cities?
Uh, right, like, I think Kent has more than, probably about one point two. So, but of course, the fee ratio that we are proposing, or that we may use, is different from theirs, because the BNO, it depends how you set your fee. So, I don't think it would really be equitable.
Here's my question. We're proposing basically a flat fee based on the number of employees. First part of the question is, are there any other communities in King County that you're aware of that do that?
Uh, yes.
And where, where do we stack up in terms of that?
Actually, the law spell out that twenty dollars. So, if you want to go above twenty dollars, you take it to the people.
No, we're talking about business registration fee. Not, not the Transportation Benefit District.
Yes, the business register, I just, what I'm saying is, the fee that we are charging, currently, we have seventy-five, and we're making, I think, the total revenue that we're getting is about two hundred and sixty thousand. But based on the way we scale it, where we have employee from zero to ten, eighty, eleven to twenty-five, different jurisdictions use different breakdown.
Okay. And that, that was the first part of my question is, where do we stack up, then, in terms of the different breakdowns? So, if we say zero to ten, at eighty dollars, do, what's their initial range?
Okay, you have entities that are using, actually, about, some that are using higher than a hundred and twenty for the first. I have an entity that do zero to five that is charging fifty. So, I also have entities that have eleven to twenty-five that are charging more than two hundred dollars. So, in terms of where we range, I think we're still probably lower, medium.
So, how did we come up with this amount, these amounts?
What I try to do is to come in the middle of the average of the entities that we look at.
Okay.
Which are the Kent, Auburn, Burien, SeaTac.
Okay, so, but, but that, I'm, I'm talking about right now, just based on the, the format that you have there. So, Kent, for instance, has a BNO tax, and that's a percentage of revenues, right? Or grocery receipts or something like that?
Yes.
So, how, that's, that's a different subject. So, based on this structure, that's the first part of my question. The second part of my question is, for those municipalities that do have BNO taxes that are a percentage of revenues, where do we stack up that way?
In terms of this being percentage of their revenue, I do not know.
Okay. And why did we decide to go this way versus the other way, a BNO tax?
Is having a flat fee. Uh, well, I think, which most of them stagger this way, I think having a flat fee, which for most of the people that I talk to, which I do also agree, is unfair. Where you have a company with hundred employees paying seventy-five bucks, and you have a company that is one person, selling from their own home, doing seventy-five, paying seventy-five bucks, too. So, you have a company that has a capacity to pay more, paying so little. You have a small business, a one-person show, that probably doesn't have the capacity to pay more, paying as much as a big company. So, this is a way to-
No, I, I understand that, and I appreciate it. I'm not making myself very clear. So, why did we go with this, with a flat fee versus a BNO tax?
Well, first of all, the, as we stated previously, the BNO tax, because ninety percent of the businesses in Federal Way are less than ten people.
I know, but I think, Julie, you know, I, I, I understand from what she said, and I understand from my own experience, that you can carve certain, you know, things out. So, I'm just curious as to why. Was that the reasoning?
Well, and it's business competitiveness. One of the things that, it attracts you to business here, one of the key things we say to businesses, and we have said, is that we have no BNO tax.
Yes. And that's part of what I was trying to get at, is I see a lot of value in not having a BNO tax for business attraction and retention. But that's why I was asking the questions, though. I want to know if those are the reasons.
Okay, BNO tax is also different from this. I think, I think, like the mayor is saying, if we're trying to grow our economy, and majority of our businesses in Federal Way are small, we really want to tax them heavily. Also, at this point, if we're trying to recruit more businesses, I think one of the things that they often look at is, okay, how much is the BNO? How much is the business license? And I think using, for where we are today, trying to recruit more businesses, charging high BNO may be a little bit discouraging.
No, I, I agree a hundred percent. In fact, I told Mayor Farrell several months ago that the reason my company now is in Federal Way is because we don't have a BNO tax, and we could get, you know, a licensing fee for only seventy-five dollars. That's why we made that decision. So, let's see, other questions? When would this start, the, the fee, the business registration fee, if we were to approve it? Would it start in seventeen, or would it start immediately?
The fair co-registration, if you were to go with fair co-registration based on the guideline that the Department of License-
No, 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 business registration, what we were just talking about.
Business registration, if you pass the law now, if you pass the ordinance, it will take effect thirty days from there.
Okay. All right, thank you. And, okay, so I'm going to move off of that. On the utility tax, Susan asked the question that I was going to ask, which I had asked previously when we discussed it, and we didn't know at that point either, whether Lake Haven would potentially offset the utility tax and put it on the taxpayers. I think it is important for us to know, if there's a way, we can find out what their plans might be before we make this decision. It's, you know, it, it's just, I don't want to make this decision not knowing what the impact could potentially be on the community, although I understand the reasoning behind it. And, as you know, Mayor, I've been trying to get more police officers for a lot, a long time. It's an important thing that we need to do. So, but I, I think this is just, how do we balance it, trying to figure that out? And so, the franchise fee would go away, you said, if we did this?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And then net would be one million.
Okay, so net is new money. That's all new revenue?
That's right, yes.
Okay, all right. And that's, would start same, when would that start, if we were to do that?
The, the, the utility tax, too, because it's based on the ordinance of the council, I think that would take effect, you know, it's an ordinance, it would be based on thirty days.
Thirty days.
And also, it can be an arrangement that we make with Lake Haven also.
Okay. Okay.
While you're looking, I'm just going to announce the next order. So, after Councilmember Maloney is, is done asking questions, we've got Councilmember Asefa Dawson, and then Councilmember Copac.
Okay. So, I will also just say that I am concerned about using the COPS grants. I remember when we had the former mayor, and there were discussions about using the COPS grants. There was a lot of, I mean, I was new on council, but there was a lot of discussion and concern about using them because they weren't permanent funds that we could, you know, pay the salaries of these officers with on an ongoing basis once they ran out. So, I think, you know, we need to be aware of that as we move forward, and if we decide to, to utilize those funds, or to try to get access to them, anyway. So, I guess that is it for now. Thank you.
And the, the real benefit of that is, because I, I share, you know, your, we obviously need to be looking- And the real benefit of that is, as I share, you know, we obviously need to be looking on the back end, and our ability to do that. By utilizing the COPS grant in the second half of the biennium for '18, this actually means for the next biennial budget that we plan, which will be '19 and '20, we'd still have the COPS grants. So then we're looking at '21, '22. And by that time, you know, I've actually explained, you know, to perhaps to Wild Waves and some other folks, that we'll have to have some other revenue options in place. We will likely have to take a look, you know, not this biennium, not next one, but the several down, different funding options about how to do that. And by that time, you know, we'll just take a look at, again, the funding options. But you're absolutely right, at the end of those three years, we'll have to pay that. Now, I want to explain something, because there's, normally, COPS grants, I want to make sure this is clear for everybody, okay? Normally, COPS grants cover 75% of the cost of the officers. But that's entry-level officers. Here, as you may recall, in order to beef up our numbers, and because of the delay it takes to get officers through the academy, we've been doing a lateral officer program. So the average is about, and the COPS grant covers those new officers, if we hire laterals, they'll be coming in at what's referred to as a D-step, or a higher step. So, the COPS grant will cover 60%. We're, again, making sure that our budgets actually reflect, or this budget reflects actual and likely cost. That recovery that we will get from the COPS grant on five officers would be 230,000, and that adds up. Again, the projected revenue is 1.81, the projected expenditure with the COPS grant is 1.81. All right. Councilmember Sepha Dawson. And I just, I want to say one thing as well, is that, you know, we originally, with regard to the revenue, I'll tell you, we originally had two parks positions, as you saw, we had put forward the full range of budget applications, and there was a need, which, that more than doubled the expenditure request when we first provided options to the council, which included several parks positions and another IT person. But when we were taking a look at raising revenue, essentially raising taxes, you know, my position and the position of administration is, we've got to make this impact as low as possible, as little as possible, while hitting and maintaining the number-one priority of our city government, that we're all on the same page on about police. I mean, I think, we remember during the budget priority discussions, we were going back and forth about, and actually agreeing with each other, that the police and police protection and the safety of our community is the number-one priority. So I just, I wanted to say that, because I know that, I wanted to bring on two additional parks folks. We also had $300,000 in there originally, for market adjustment for our employees to make, to be competitive with the other regions. However, and my concern is, again, the raising of revenue, it's a fine line, it's a delicate balance of making sure that we're not raising taxes to the point where it creates disincentives for businesses to stay here or move here. So, we walked away from that. So these are very difficult decisions, and this is, obviously, you guys, this is my recommendation, but we'll see, we'll see what happens. We've got a Councilmember Sepha Dawson, and then Councilmember Copeng.
So my question is, still around adjustment of business registration fees. So, it starts out really low, like 80 and 120, 250, and then it jumps to 1,500 and 4,500, 9,500, based on the number of employees? And, can you explain to us?
Right there.
Yeah, the reason behind those numbers.
I've got my little pointer here.
Yeah. So you have 250 for employees between 26 and 50, and then from 51 to 100, just jumps to 1,500?
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to understand what the reasoning behind...
Why that big gap? I think, like I said, what I try to do is look at what others are doing, to make sure we stay not too high and not too low. So using of the average of what other entities are charging, to make sure we're not too high, we're not too low. That is where that came from.
Sort of like the Gulilocks effect.
Mm-hmm.
Sorry. All right. Councilmember Sepha Dawson, do you have any?
No, it just seems high, I don't know.
Yeah, and it is a jump.
I'm a business owner, so it's a huge jump to me.
From 250 to 1,005, yes, I think it's high, but like I said...
And then 9,500 just seems extremely high.
The 9,500?
Yeah.
I think we probably will have maybe about four companies in that category, so...
Okay. Councilmember Copeng, and then Councilmember Honda.
Counsel, I want to thank you for the questions. I think we're really diving into this subject, and the couple, on the B and O tax, well, I think our strategy to attract business, we made a determination that the B and O tax is something we wanted to leave off the table and continue to market ourselves as being a city that was looking for businesses to come here. We wanted to be an attractive option too, and as we heard from Councilmember Maloney, her business is now here as a result. We want a lot more businesses to come here. Obviously, we have this tremendous amount of inventory in office space right now, and obviously, we've got the premier property, business property on the West Coast, probably, right here in federal way vacant. So, I think continuing to not have a B and O tax is important for us. But this business registration fee, I think is one of those things that can bridge the revenue gap that not having a B and O tax would create. The challenge that I think that Councilmember Maloney was talking about, and it's certainly a question I have as well, is, we want to remain competitive.
Yes.
And, having the context of what other jurisdictions are charging for these same fees would be helpful to me, in understanding the relative impact we would have in creating a competitive opportunity for, or competitive environment for companies to come here, and then by artificially creating a new hurdle that disincentivizes that same movement toward us, that's, I think that's one thing that I'd like to have be very clear, so we understand.
If the need be, at the next meeting, I can actually be bringing the analysis that we put together that will show what other cities are charging.
Okay, good. Thank you for that, Ade.
That'd be very helpful.
Yeah. The next thing is, regarding the utility tax, losing $107,000 a year in revenue, because our franchise fee is less than the actual costs we're incurring as a city, that's a non-starter. And that's an issue that I've communicated to you, that I had some concerns about long ago. So I think all of us are probably in agreement that we don't want to step $107,000 further back every year as a result of this franchise fee. So, looking at some alternative was certainly something that was attractive to me. But I think the idea of consistency in how we treat each one of the utilities in the city is probably a good next step for us as a city, that we are not picking favorites, as it were, in how we implement taxation. So I think I certainly have some, I think I would support us taking a very serious look at that. And I understand that this would have an impact on the rate payers. But I also, I think that there is, there's revenue available, or there's enough revenue on Lake Haven's side to probably cover this, and I think that with a little bit of analysis, that's going to be pretty readily apparent to anybody that takes a serious look at that. So, I don't think they would need to pass on those rate increases, or rate increase to cover the utility tax, so...
Looking at their financial statement, I think, looking at their debt level, you know, they have the capacity. What they do, of course, is up to them, but looking at their, you know, financial statement, I think they're sitting very well.
Yeah, I think, I would appreciate not having somebody else tell me how to run my city.
Right.
So I'm not certainly saying that that's what they need to do, but I think that there is capacity for them to at least consider that as an option. Anyway, Ade, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Going back to the businesses paying for their employees, the school district is one of our largest employers, but our school district has many schools outside the city limits. So would we only charge the school district for those employees in the schools within the city limits? Has that something you've thought about?
Why, is the school business? The school wouldn't call into this.
The school, no.
They don't, okay.
No.
Can you, not tonight, I don't expect this tonight, but when you have time or someone in your department, can you let us know how many businesses are in each category?
Oh, yes.
And if we adopt this, will you need that new staff member in your department, then?
Uh, no.
No?
No.
You'll be okay?
Yeah, because as I said, I think earlier, these is currently in our system that shows, because when they come in for registration, that is part of what they put in. If we have to start investigating them, that's a different story. But based on what they've provided for us now, we have this information.
Okay.
But at TBD, where we were charging $20 per license for a registered car, or an admissions fee where we're going after the movie theater, you know, or in Wild Waves, that would likely take additional people, right?
Yes.
Not officers, additional people.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. Counsel, any other, Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Brebridge?
Thank you. I'm also very appreciative of the presentation and all of the work and preparation that it represents. I do have a couple of comments. Regarding the B and O tax, I'd be reluctant to implement that as well at this point. And I know that Kent had a significant dialogue with their Chamber of Commerce and their business community before they implemented theirs. It's also my understanding, I'm not really totally clear on this, that they, in addition to not charging it on the smallest businesses, that they had different levels, different percentages that they charged. I share Councilmember Copeng's concern about the franchise agreement and losing any on that, and would like to have that addressed in the future. And I also continue to want to express my, I want to express my concern about maintaining our reserves, so that we maintain our financial health as a city. And I'm also concerned about not providing a market adjustment for our employees. I think we maybe should be taking a look and having some discussion on that. So, I'm wondering too, we're talking about a number of different proposed changes this evening, and will we be presented at the next meeting with the implications for these changes, any of these changes that occur on the rest of the budget? Will be given revised numbers?
Okay, if that is what the council wants, we will be able to present that. I think for now, the proposed changes, you know, just to make sure I fully have everything down, is this mayor's amendment, I think there's some discussion regarding the council's budget. I think so far, those are probably the major two that I have. And based on what we have in here, for 2017 and '18, it will be a wash if the council approves the additional revenue. So, any other item that the council want, then we'll have to come up with the source of revenue for that. But this, based on what mayor just presented, for 2017 and '18, the revenue will support the spending, and that is what is needed. At my first budget presentation, also, we were able to preserve our reserve. Where the limit that the council set, we met each one of them. But I also pointed out that we were not funding our equipment reserve for two years, if you remember that, and I think that is also what mayor has attempted to do with 500,000 here. But we skipped two years, which account for about 1.8. I think it needs to be understood what that really means. So in the long term, the mayor and the council, we need to find sustainable revenue source to fund the city.
Yeah, I did feel that was very important to make sure that we've got equipment reserve at a minimum, the $250,000 figure. I would note, and I, Counsel, I'll let you know, but I want to make sure the public knows as well, I gave this presentation to the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors earlier this morning, and because obviously, some of this has to do, these revenue options have to do with local businesses, so I wanted to let you know that. And the market adjustments for personnel, we have been accomplishing that on a case-by-case basis. That was sort of a catch-all that was thrown out when we were taking a look at revenue options, at the $300,000 figure, and we just had to make an assessment of, is this absolutely essential in this budget environment? Okay, Counsel, any other comments, considerations? Actually, is there, we're 10 minutes away from 10 o'clock, is there a motion to extend time?
I so move.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to extend time past 10:00 PM. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Counsel, any other, anything else on this subject? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ade. All right, now moving on to council reports. Councilmember Sepha Dawson.
Nothing to report on, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Maloney.
I've been out of town a lot, I have nothing to report on.
Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Kevin Hutchinson over at the community center for the event last Friday, the Oktoberfest. He's a member of the Quanian Club, Quanis Club, and a city employee. The Quanis Club puts the event on, and the city supports it very heavily, but Kevin does a heck of a lot of work, and he works really well with our citizens who are in his program. And with the monies raised, we can provide more services to those folks, so I'd like to thank him.
That's great. Councilmember Copeng.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to use this opportunity just to speak real briefly about it, just this issue with Lake Gene, I think continues to kind of rub me the wrong way. I think, don't like to see injustice, and I think the residents of Lake Gene have been tormented for over four years now, with a lake that they really can't use, they can't enjoy, and really has diminished the value that they, I mean, we've already seen it demonstrated with the assessor. I think that we have two standards right now, that we assess, this blue-green algae. One is for drinking, and the other is for recreational level. And I think in the, well, in the Parks and Recreation Public Safety, or the Human Services and Public Safety Committee meeting, one of the things that we talked about was exploring the impact of having another standard, a residential standard, that is something specific to federal way. And again, I think that, while I can't say that is going to be something that the council will enact, that is certainly something that, I think as a council, we can't just stand by and watch something continue to be a problem, year after year after year, with no action. So, just to be on the soapbox for a second, that is something that I think the committee is looking at very seriously, at least in pursuit of some kind of a policy outcome that we can bring to the council as a whole. Changing subjects entirely now, I'm looking forward to the Super Supper on the 28th. The Federal Way Caregiving Network is, really, it's a network of heroes that really go unsung in our community, but they make a difference every day in the lives of those, early on the fringes of our city. They provide rent assistance, they provide meals three nights a week, they provide the necessities, socks, and, you know, toothbrushes and all those things that we take for granted. Basically, they are a part of our community that the city has partnered with to really help those that need it the most. And the Super Supper is a great community event, in that it brings people from all walks of life in, to a place where they can hear about the need of the community, but also contribute. We have a number of different restaurants and community groups that are making soup for this event, and for those of you in the community that have not been to that event, it really is a good, good cause and a fun event as well. I know many of the council have gone to that year after year after year, and it's just, it's good to see a community that cares. And the Community Caregiving Network certainly epitomizes that, and again, it's an organization that should be supported... And again, it's a, it's an organization that should be supported year-round. But the Super Supper is really a fun time for those that want to participate. So I definitely encourage you to see to do that.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. What a great report, Mark, thank you. I have been in office for just about three years. And this has been the most challenging year of the three, and I welcome those challenges. And I know that our city is facing a lot of challenges currently and earlier in the year. But where there's those challenges, there is a lot of positive that, that is out there as well. And I wanted to kind of share a really quick message that I think is really important to note, the, the great work that our city is currently doing. And I, I, it was interesting, because as I was going to the car after leaving my council office, I ended up helping this individual. Her name is May. And she was looking for the police department. And she walked in, so I helped her get to the police department. And we started talking, and it's amazing what happens when you just connect with a total stranger. She actually knew one of my former bosses, Representative Roger Freeman. And that sparked a great connection and a great conversation. And so after we got done talking about Roger, we ended up talking about how great our city is and how great our police department is. And so with this, Mr. Mayor, I do want to read this message that I asked for her to email me back. And so here goes. "When I would call for a wellness check on my mother when I was out of town, working, the police would do a wellness check. While driving by one day, the officer stopped in front of the house, and my mom was backing out of the garage, and her driving appeared to be a little shaky." And I should say that her grand, her mother is a hundred and one, was a hundred and one years old at the time. "He stopped her and asked where she was going. She stated that she's going to the store. He then recommended that he take her and let her shop while he waited. I think she was happy that happened. I've lived in Federal Way for over twenty-five years, and these gestures of kindness I have witnessed throughout the years help me know that this is an area with great police, I'm sorry, was a great place to raise my family, and I love my community. I am so happy, I called Lindsay. She has been such a huge help in our neighborhood in keeping it safe." And that's, and I'll end that. And so I just, I thought that was really important, because again, I, I just think that we have a great police department and a great community, and a lot of great positive things that are happening here in our community. I do want to thank the chairman of, of the Parks and Human Services and Public Safety Committee for talking about Lake Gene. I think it's, I think there is injustice going. And I'm glad that our committee is going to come up or work with the mayor and, and the city to provide some policy perspectives. And so I'm glad that that's kept in the horizon. Also wanted to reiterate my support for Camp Killworth. I want to make sure that, you know, the trees that we're cutting are trees that are sick and they're, that are dangerous to people. Not, I want to reiterate that we shouldn't be cutting trees just for the sake of money because of mismanagement within an organization that I will not mention. And I also want to say that to, to the community, to the community that's being greatly affected by the warehouse. And that's, I've read the technical letter that we have put together, and I have to say that I was, I was really pleased because I felt, in my own personal opinion, that it really represented the voices that have been here for several months. And so I, I want to say thank you to Scott and his department for working on that, and of course, with the city. And the multifamily housing. It, it's a difficult issue, and I want to thank Margaret for her presentation. And I appreciate some of the conversations that we had. And that's the thing, is, is part of ending homelessness is providing affordable and, and low-income housing. So my hope is, how do we balance that out? Because I understand the community's frustration on that. They don't want to see any more Section Eight housing, they don't want to see any more of, of multifamily housing. I know, you know, it's a concern with my mother-in-law. But I think it plays an important role in getting people off the streets, getting low-income families in stable and safe housing, because a lot of them are coming from dangerous situations. And so I just wanted to kind of put that out there. And with that, I thank you to my colleagues for listening to my rather long report after ten o'clock. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore.
I'll try to make mine a little shorter. First of all, I want to thank, and I want to acknowledge the people that attended the, the meeting last Thursday and that you've been, when you've been here, the last several meetings that we have on the warehouse of property. You guys are fantastic. Now, one person got up and insulted anybody. You all presented very well, you had good facts, you had logical conclusions. And my hats are off to you, because this is a very, very tough issue, and I really, really appreciate how you present yourselves. So thank you, and spread word to everybody else over there. Lake Gene is, is an issue that we really, whether, whether it shows that it's toxic or dangerous for drinking, how would you like to live on a lake that all you can see is green algae? And it actually forms a green covering on your shoreline? And if your dog or your cat walk through it, they come out with green legs. I don't think that's the kind of lakes that we want to have here. So I know we've had the toxic reports, and they, they're not dangerous, but I think we need to help those people get rid of that. They should have, they should have the right to have clean lake water that they can look at, that they can go out in a boat, their children can swim in. And they can't swim, especially at that one end. It is terrible, it's absolutely deplorable. So I think we throw out the toxic reports and try to do something to help those people. They, they are citizens here, they pay taxes here, and we need to do something to help them. And I'll, I'll, I'll be very, very brief. So I'll just say the next meeting of the Finance, Economic Development, Regional Affairs Committee is next Tuesday at four thirty P M. in the Friends of the Elbow's. And thank you all for staying with us tonight.
All right. Deputy Mayor Burbidge.
Thank you very much. I attended a meeting of the South County Area Transportation Board this morning, and there were a couple of things at that meeting that were reviewed that need to be mentioned. One is the planned expansion of Sea-Tac Airport. They are expanding in virtually every direction, north, south, east in particular. And which means that their flights are going to increase and as well the noise. So I think we need to touch base with the port, with the FAA, and with some of the other cities. Buryan in particular is, is, is very concerned, and I would encourage some conversations in that direction. The other issue at that meeting was a discussion about the legislative program for Skateboard, for the South County Transportation Board. And it's my understanding, too, that Sound Cities Association is requesting legislative agendas from the cities so they can use them in putting theirs together. And I'm just mentioning that is, I'm wondering if we have specific plans for ours at this point?
We do, we're working on it right now. I've got Steve McNei and Community Outreach working on that agenda.
Good, wonderful. Because I know we were, we were saying earlier that we hope we could get ours out earlier this year.
That's right, that's right.
That's helpful to know.
And then on that front.
I know that's a little inappropriate for me to jump in, if I may, though. Shouldn't it be directed by council? Isn't that the council's agenda? So legislative agenda?
I think we'll get an email out to council in regard to, we identified some preliminary issues, but we'll get, we'll have outreach to council.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Did you get that, Steve?
Yes, sir, I did. We're working with Aaron Flaggar, our lobbyist, to pull together some of the issues that are going to be dealing with South Sound and other municipalities.
Let's do this. Tomorrow, Steve, send an email to every council member and follow up with every council member about issues that they would like to see in the legislative agenda to make sure they're, it's all inclusive, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, and just a few other things briefly. Oktoberfest was a great event. I missed Advancing Leadership because I'd already committed to the Symphony fundraiser when Advancing Leadership changed their date. So I couldn't make it to that one. And I would love to see a good turnout at the Super Supper. It's so worthwhile. I apologize for missing the town hall meeting. I had an injury to my hand, it's not much better. So I'm pleased with that. And I also would like to recognize our community members. We had a really good turnout at the meeting this evening, which we frequently have. And I think hearing from our community and being aware of how many volunteer groups we have, we have such an involved citizenry. And I, I so much appreciate all of the folks who work so hard in so many ways. But I also want to express appreciation to our hard-working staff. I'm reminded so often how hard our staff work, and with our revenue per capita being lower than, than most other cities in King County, and yet we achieve at a very high level. So I want to recognize all of the staff. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Honda.
The Super Supper is not a free event. I, you know, we keep inviting people. It's not our event, it's the caregivers', and it's, it's a fundraiser, it's thirty dollars. And it sits Steel Lake Presbyterian Church on Friday the twenty-eighth from five to eight. So, you know, we, we do all want people to come, but you do have to buy tickets.
That's a really good point.
And you can buy tickets at the door.
It's a really good point.
They're not expensive, though.
Yeah. And, and thank you for nailing down the time and reminding everybody. It'd be great to see as many people there as possible. Okay, we do have, I can't adjourn right now, as we have executive session for two items, property acquisition pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one one zero one B, and potential litigation pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty-one one zero one one, or one I. All right. With that, we are in recess for that purpose.